Please keep your phones and device speakers muted in order to prevent any audio interference. Look back. Thank you.
See that again?
I can do it. Alright.
Thank you for listening. If you have any questions, please let us know. We will do our best to answer them as soon as possible.
The purpose of tonight's council meeting is for the city council to adopt a resolution recognizing that exemption. So we're very excited because this allows the city of Monterey to move forward in its negotiations. And my colleague Grant Leonard's on the phone. He's been the primary staff person working on this project. And Grant, do you have anything to add to that?
Kim and council members, I think the only interesting point to add to what Kim mentioned is the reason we qualify for this exemption is because of the direction the city council gave to have properties be 100% affordable housing to target low and very low and extremely low income brackets and to have the properties be permanently be restricted. So all of those exceed the state minimum standards for housing development for affordable housing. And because we exceeded those standards, we're eligible for this exemption. So I think that's important to point out the quality of these proposals we received and what are else eligible for this.
Good. I'll go back to Councilmember Tyler then.
Beautiful. Thank you, staff, for the quick presentation there. And I have kind of three questions, but I'm going to ask them all at once and just kind of allow you to respond to it. So assuming that we approve this tonight, where does this leave us as in regards to these four projects? What is the status of the water issue? And when are we looking at being able to allow the developers to actually move forward with submitting the city like development plans, design proposals?
So Grant, why don't you start off discussing the exclusive negotiating agreements and the draft schedule, and then I can follow up with the water issue.
Absolutely. So at this point, the city's released the request for proposals. We've received those proposals. And in February, the council gave direction for staff to begin negotiating with two selected developers. One is First Community Housing for the property of Adam Street, and the other is Mid Penn Housing Corporation for the other three parcels. Those negotiations have not started. They will start after this resolution is passed and we're exempted from surplus lands. The city staff and city team will then begin that negotiating process with our development partners, and we will return to city council with a draft development agreement so that council can review that and approve what the developers are proposing. And then I believe that's it on that process. Both developers are eager to be working on this. So I just may jump right into it this summer.
Great. Thank you, Grant, very much. In terms of the water situation, none of the sites really come with adequate water resources in order to develop the projects, and the city of Monterey is subject to a cease and desist order. We do have some water available in our reserves to transfer to these sites, but we still are needing to go through a process with the state Water Resources Control Board in order to have them developed. So the city has been working collaboratively with the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, who has submitted paperwork to the state requesting an exemption to the cease and desist order. So one of the key decision points we're going to have here is the timing of the water supply with the proposed developments. And there may be a scenario where the projects have to be dialed back if we're not successful in obtaining that exemption to the cease and desist order, or we may be able to build exactly what we want to build after negotiations with the developers. So the request, I actually called the water district this past week asking about the status of that request to the state of California, and they have not heard back yet. So we will probably be able to provide you more information by the end of the summer about how the timing comes together for the water resources.
Okay. And then one follow up for each of you. So Grant, if I could just press a little bit further, when does staff think that the proposals will come back to the council for approval? And then when does that give them the go ahead to start submitting plans to the city? When are we kind of anticipating that? Not that it's necessarily a guarantee. And then for Kim, what is the total acre feet of water that we're anticipating for all of the projects?
Yeah, so I'm not sure I have a firm answer on when we'd return. We do have our internal team set up. We have some outside council who will be coming on to help with the negotiating. But at this point, I don't have an answer for that. So Kim, do you have a sense of how long these development negotiations take based off Van Buren or one of the past projects that might shed some light?
They can definitely take several months. So I would anticipate that over the summer and into early fall, we'll be negotiating the contracts or the agreements and then bringing those forward to the city council. Of course, the big unknown is the amount of water resources. So the challenge is going to be crafting the agreements and providing flexibility regarding the water resources. So I mean, this is going to be our next work effort in the housing office for the next three to five months to negotiate those agreements. And regarding water supply, I'm just trying to bring up my spreadsheet. I didn't have that. Maybe while you take public comment, if there is any, I can just find my water spreadsheet here.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Dan.
Thank you. It's been a while since I've seen this item or I remember this item. So I was just like to ask the staff if these properties, is the intent of the city to relinquish the title? Or are we looking at land leases for these particular RFPs? I can't remember.
That's something we have not discussed publicly yet, how we are going to do that. Previously, we never gave land away, but entered into ground leases. That's our usual business practice, not to give the land away, but enter to a 50 year, 60 year agreement with the appropriate resolutions.
I guess the only reason why I say that is when I see surplus land, I think that that land is going to be transferred to another community. So thank you.
I do have clarification. So we're looking at a potential of about 152 housing units if we're able to build the total amount that was proposed on these project sites, which would require about 14 acre feet of water.
Thank you. And I have one last comment to share, Mayor, but I'll let the public speak first if there's any public comments on this one.
All right, we will. Let's see if there is, since this has been pulled, any public comment on this? Anyone in the audience or online?
Let's see. It doesn't look like anyone's waiting in line here at the council chambers, but we do have Esther Malkin, who has raised her hand, and we will welcome your feedback, Esther.
Hi, everybody. So nice to see you back in your actual home there, those of you that are there. Just wanted to thank staff and everybody for really persisting on this with the water issue. We were a little bit panicked when we heard that it might not happen. So thanks for everyone's work on that. I'm sure you guys, you know, know that I'm in touch with Senator John Laird's office and others on the water issue. And I'm hearing that we shouldn't have a problem getting the water we need, which we don't know if that's going to actually be the case or not. But I'm happy to, you know, continue advocating for it. I'm just curious, what's going on? I mean, I thought that there was some water that was being negotiated also for the Garden Road projects. And I just want to be sure that that one doesn't hold up the other. Priority, in my opinion, should go to the 100% affordable housing projects always, not just city owned, anything that has more affordable housing attached to it than the 20% is where I think we should be granting any water that we have, prioritizing it over for profit developers. So just wanted to throw that out there. I don't know where the Garden Road project is. I can tell you there's no activity over here on North Fremont with that project, and everybody's wondering about that. But anyway, mainly, I want to thank everybody for staying on top of this, and I hope to be around when it finally happens. Thanks.
Thank you, Esther.
Anybody else?
Do we have anyone else?
Let's see. We have anyone else online? We do not have any other public speakers. So that concludes public comment on this.
I can briefly address Esther's question, Mr. Mayor.
Please do.
Mr. Stolt has requested 75 acre feet of water to be released for housing solutions on the Monterey Peninsula, and that will be also then including the properties at Garden Road. And we are advocating first come, first served. What I mean by that is that they should allocate the water for those communities into those communities who have projects lined up already and not to a distribution base that they want to give water to certain communities and then divide it up. But whoever's ready to build should get all the water.
Yes. And so, Councilmember Tyler, you said you were waiting to make a comment. This is the time to make it, please.
Yeah, actually, one additional follow up, and not if it requires too much digging here, but do we know how many acre feet we're anticipating a need for Garden Road projects?
It's about 20 acre feet of water. If I remember correctly, it's about 400 units in total that are built in addition to the water that is there. I think it was something like 20, 22 acre feet.
Okay. And then my last little comment here is I'll actually go ahead and move approval. But I'm just hoping, and I'm glad to hear that staff anticipates looking at this over the next three to five months with the developers. I'm just hoping that we kind of maintain this as top priority, as a high priority in our efforts here.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for your good questions. Before I call for a motion, I have just a quick comment. And that is, one of the things that President Biden has talked about as a social equity issue has been homeownership, whether that's a single family, a condominium, apartment, but the whole idea behind homeownership. whether that's a single family, a condominium, apartment, but the whole idea behind homeownership with the ability to build up equity and actually accrue wealth so people do have an opportunity to enjoy the American dream. I've also heard representatives of the NAACP as well as Governor Newsom also talking about the whole idea of homeownership. So as negotiations go forward, that would be something I would be very interested in seeing, the possibility of homeownership for people, affordable home ownership. So I'll make a motion to approve item eight. We have a second?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Council member Albert?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
Council member Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. Item nine is the Gap project or the Gap Bridge, and this has to do with Laguna Seca. And I think it's very exciting, as I've said before. I was on the original JPA for Laguna Seca back in the 80s when I was the mayor at that time. And over the years, the JPA more or less didn't dissolve, but it was very inactive. Over the last, oh, probably three years, we've had real interest and concerns from our Monterey neighbors in particular about beautification, renewal of the park, as well as safety issues. And so I'm very pleased to say we've got the bands back together, the JPA is going strong. And one of the two things that we were looking at was one, the Gap Bridge, which is part of that, but the second one in particular, which is the appropriation of funds to create a trail maintenance plan. That was really a priority and something that the representatives from Seaside, Monterey, and the Regional Park District emphasized at our last meeting. Interestingly enough, the park is more or less owned by the Regional Park District. Most of it is in Seaside, but the impacts that have caused the most concerns border on the city of Monterey where we have residential property. So it has been a real good collection and coming together of the minds to work on this. Esther, who commented earlier, I want to always give her a shout out for her efforts in this area, too. She's really been a motivator to get this going. So Hans, would Kim be able to just give us a quick look, please, at these two items? And again, it's celebratory, not really questioning.
Yeah, Kim, if you would just give us a brief overview of item number nine and then let the council vote, and then we go to number 10.
Yeah.
I would be happy to do that. I hope you all can see my screen. One of the most exciting projects is the city has been working collaboratively with our partners, the city of Seaside and the Transportation Agency for Monterey County to connecting our bikeway system. And as many of you know, the current bike path on North Fremont Street terminates at Casanova Avenue. And we have on the phone Andrea Rennie who can talk about the history if you would like more information. But the plan that our Public Works Department has been working on is then to ultimately connect that, the system, by having bikes, this connection gap travel down the, I believe it's the north side of North Fremont Street, and then connect into at the corner of Canyon Del Ray and North Fremont Street, the Fortag Trail. So it's really, all of the pieces are coming together to connect all of the pathways. And so this is our connection gap. A lot of it's very straightforward, but the one challenge we have is there is a depression where there's the waterway that basically comes into the park. And so we're needing to bridge that waterway in order to be able to have the bike trail connect. So this is just a real concept view of the proposed project. And at this point, we're not asking for approval. What we are doing is, in that spirit of collaboration, we're working together with the city of Seaside to prepare an environmental document so we can get this project closer to shovel ready. Ultimately, the city council will be asked to certify the environmental document as well as the city of Seaside. And by the city of Monterey taking on lead agency status for the environmental review of this segment of the project, we can move it further along and make it more eligible for grants, more ripe towards construction when the Fortag Trail is ultimately connected at the corner of 218 and North Fremont Street. And with that, I will stop sharing and our expert on the project, Andrea Rennie is also available if you have questions about the specific connection.
Okay, good, thank you. And I think, thank you for pointing out that the concept that we saw was a concept that's necessarily going to look like that. So that's very important. And any of you who do travel along North Fremont realize there's a depression, it's just a drop off. And we were looking at just putting a regular rec trail there alongside the street, simply impossible. Any public comment on this one, Matt?
Mayor, actually, I have a few questions.
Sure.
And I'll go ahead and just ask, I have two, I'll go ahead and just ask them together. One is about the project in general, which I know we're not going into that too much here, but just kind of maybe a little bit of a thought or understanding. And then another is just about the logistics behind this particular thing that we're proving today. So the first part here, I'm assuming this bridge will be wide enough to allow pedestrians and cyclists to cross in opposite directions. So just kind of wanted to give a little bit of clarity on that. And the other question is regarding the city of Monterey taking lead agency in this joint effort with Seaside. How is our staff cost being incorporated into this joint agreement? In regards to sharing the cost amongst the municipalities are participating in this effort?
Andrea, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Kim. Mr. Mayor, council members, good afternoon. So just to give a little bit of background as this relates to the North Fremont project. So the first part that, the first design that we had was actually having retaining walls and sort of a rect rail, but it also included the addition of a bus rapid transit lane. So this design simplifies, and since we were not able to award the contract for that last portion of it because the retaining walls were so expensive. And it was also right next to an environmentally sensitive habitat area in that depressed area. So we had a couple of challenges and what we did is we got the design that was funded by NCIP, and we designed it as a bridge connection. So part of it is a sidewalk that goes on the north side from Casanova to where the depression starts. And then there's a bridge that, as council member Williamson asked, is about 14 feet wide. We do have two designs. TMC did ask that we revise the design so that it would be wider, and they funded part of the redesign through a regional surface transportation funding. And then for the part of it that has to do with the environmental, I'll give it back to Kim. Thank you.
So in terms of the environmental, whenever a project crosses city boundary lines, you have to pick one agency or the other to be the lead. And so in this case, the city of Monterey is proposing to take the lead on the environmental document. All preparation of the environmental document will be outsourced. And Andrea, what was your funding source? I know you had money to prepare the environmental document.
It was NCIP and Regional Surface Transportation Program.
There you go.
Okay, good. I hope that answers the questions. Any more questions from the council, please? Are we seeing none? Any public comment?
Yes, we have Esther Malkin. I'm not sure if you hear me. Do you all hear me? Okay, we do have Esther Malkin, and let's hear from Esther. She has raised her hand apparently or disappeared from, oh, here we go. Let's.
Sorry about that. I lowered my hand from the previous comment. Again, thank you to staff for, you know, pursuing this and staying on top of it. I'm glad that Tyler asked the questions that he did because I think it is significant to have it be wide enough to accommodate a lot of different types of people that will hopefully be using it. I just, I'm just curious if that rendition that we're seeing is the actual design of it. I don't think it's very, it doesn't blend in very well with the, with the natural aspect that's behind it. So I'm not sure if color is something that can be addressed so that it doesn't stand out like a sore thumb like it does in that picture. But either way, this is long overdue and the sooner we can, you know, push this through and get it finalized, the residents that are, that live right on the area there will feel much safer and happier to see all of our efforts finally come to some conclusion. So thanks again, everybody.
Yes, and Esther, to answer your question, no, that isn't anywhere close to be a final design. It's simply conceptual. And I don't think any of us want a big orange box along there, so that's not going to happen. Interestingly enough, years ago, we were talking about putting a bridge from the library parking lot to the back of the library where the, that's where the old city attorney's office used to be in an old house that was falling into the ravine. And so at that time, we were talking about it and we, I think we got hung up on final design and never did get it built because we just couldn't get the work done for conceptual approval. So this is all conceptual at this point where we definitely want all the neighborhood and business and all the environmentalists to weigh in on the design of the bridge without question. Any other council questions, comments, ready for a motion?
We actually have two more public comments.
Okay.
And the first one here will be Richard Rcello. Richard, welcome to our meeting.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council.
Hi, Richard.
Hi. Well, this entire project goes back literally years. And if you think of bikeway projects, especially separated bikeways, it's the only safe way to transport bike riders. White lines on streets and green roadways are just invitations that you're going to have a fatality. And so thinking of bikeways as a string of pearls, North Fremont was the center of the necklace. And I was the sponsor on NCIP of connecting the dots from Casanova to Canyon Del Ray to tie in with the Fortag Trail. NCIP was enthusiastically in favor of this project. What we learned over the years was not to get involved in traffic projects with design. We leave that to you, ARC, and the public. What we want to see is the trail connected. And what I see is the most economical way to tie the two ends together, how you design that to be up to you. But I praise the staff for coming up with a bridge design instead of retaining walls, which would have cost a whole lot more money. I thank you for your time and I hope you pass it and get some type of meeting together to agree on the design. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Our next public caller is Kathy, no last name written here, but welcome Kathy.
Thank you. This is Kathy Bowaya. Good afternoon, Monterey City Council and Mayor Clyde. I am super excited to see the connection through. I guess I just had, and it may be too much in the weeds, but concerns as you go forward. One is the level and the, how the downward and upwards level of that sidewalk that was the final result from the bike path. And also, I would like to also encourage that we somehow place some temporary no parking. I guess my thought with that area is that people are going to want to pull in there and park. And for me and for my comfort as being part of that neighborhood, I'm happy that emergency vehicles can pull in there next to that PG&E plant. It's always kind of a concern on my mind that anybody can get access to that plant as they need to. So just as we move forward with this plan, realizing that we don't want that to be as a drop off spot for bikes and make somehow sure that we keep that area clear for emergency vehicles. But otherwise, I'm really glad that you guys are able to move forward on this and move up with the Fortag project. So congratulations on your solutions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Let's go back and see if anyone else is on our list here, and it looks like we do not. So that concludes public comment.
All right, very good. Are we ready to move on this, council?
Mayor, so one thing I think is important for us to think about, too, as this project moves forward, is I think it's a really exciting opportunity for the North Fremont Business District to start getting more opportunities for folks to utilize those businesses over there. So just kind of wanted to point that out as an exciting opportunity for that side of the city. With that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Council member Williamson?
Yes.
Council member Albert?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, that carries five oh.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add, on 6/24/24 of June, we will have a public outreach meeting about the bridge and we're looking forward hearing design proposals and ideas from our neighbors as well.
Oh, good, thank you. That's from our city manager. We appreciate that. That's something that we really try to do in the city is do outreach meetings. It takes a tiny bit more time, but it does pay off. It's another thing I've learned in 40 years, on and off council, is it's better to take the time early on or otherwise you just spend a lot of time with damage control. The next item also relates to Laguna Grande Regional Park. And this was something else that the neighbors, businesses, and other people at our JPA, which we need to get together, by the way, we need to have a meeting. And we talked about this trail maintenance strategy. And for, again, a couple reasons, the trail would allow the jurisdictions to restore the park, but also the more activity you have in the park, the safer it is. And so I was pleased that we have an environmental impact report coming funded and that most of it is paid by the proprietor, which is, of course, the Regional Park District and a small, a sharing with Seaside and Monterey. And again, the partnership has been wonderful. So again, back to you, city manager, and just a quick overview of what we're expecting here.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I give it over to Kim Cole again.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. This is just a bird's eye view of Laguna Grande Park. As the mayor introduced, the majority of the park is owned by the Monterey Peninsula Park District, and that's the blue area, which includes the lake and this pretty forested area to closer to North Fremont Street. The purple areas are owned by the city of Seaside, and then the city of Monterey owns the yellow parcels. So as the mayor described, the majority of the park is in other jurisdictions. But as we work together with the public and the JPA, we have common issues and concerns. And, you know, this is a unique project where we're coming together to solve those issues. And so the highest priority of the JPA was to look at a trail maintenance strategy and particularly to pay attention to this highly vegetated area along the park's edge here. And so what we'll be doing is the $109,000 contract will prepare a trail maintenance strategy, look where we can remove invasive species, and prepare the environmental documentation so we can move forward with that collaborative approach. If you have any questions about that, we're just getting started. We hope to be reporting back to the JPA in early fall with the results of a lot of the biological study and some of the other items we're working on.
And thank you, Kim. And I want to say that Kim Cole has really shown some great leadership at the JPA level along with her staff to get us this far. uh to get us this far. And with everything else on your plate, I'm just very impressed how much you're getting accomplished here. Uh questions from uh the council?
Uh.
Yes, Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I wanted to save my comments from um Agenda Nine and roll it all into one when we got to ten. I want to say first off, we heard a lot from our neighbors that live in that area a couple of years ago when we had some problems. Um, we also um with the help of Monterey County residents voted for Measure X and that enabled us to get to the Fortag. So I know um when we look at projects, we when we envision something happening, uh it certainly takes a lot of patience and long range planning. And with this project, step one is the environmental, which we took the motion tonight to get this into the environmental stages. So we certainly have some habitat uh accommodations that will have to be factored in. And then we'll ultimately get to the outreach and we get to uh participate in helping to design uh the project. So looking so much forward to this execution because this really didn't just start, you know, six months ago, but this started with the residents that have endured the lack of the connection for so many years. And also the the long term solution for the pedestrians and and bicyclists that they navigate through that and also the cleanup agreement with the park in the City of Seaside. These are huge and monumental. So I just wanted to say thank you to the community that lives out there that's been so patient and thanking those that voted for Measure X to get us to the point where we can have a Fortag connection and we can see how these plans start to come together. So it's exciting. And thank you to them that's put up with this for such a long time. And that's just the only comments I have.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Appreciate that. Any uh any other council questions?
Mayor, I I would just kind of echo everything uh Ed said. I I don't want to repeat that. I I I agree that it's a good strategy moving forward. I'm I'm happy to see this moving in the direction that it is. I would just offer one suggestion or idea as we move forward um that hopefully, or maybe we could have um a presentation on the maintenance strategy and the environmental document before it goes to the J P A. Um, I know that it's a public meeting that our residents could attend, um but I think it would be a great opportunity to get some additional input and and have an opportunity for for residents to share their feedback with us as well as we go into that. I mean, this is a um, I think, as we all know, a politically sensitive topic and and there's a lot of interest on that side of town. And I think the more space we create to have a public discourse um around it, I think the better.
All right, thank you. Did we go public comment yet and out of? Did I miss it or?
No, uh, we have not, and we do have one raised hand. No one here at uh council chamber, so we'll let uh Esther Melkin say a few words. Welcome back.
Yeah, um, thanks, everybody. So yeah, thank you for, you know, it looks like we're finally getting some momentum on this. Um, as you all know, I've been on this at least seven years. So um I'm happy to see it finally taking some sort of um actual formulation into what can be something we can look forward to. I just wanted to bring up um in the maintenance aspect, um not necessarily with the E I R, but in general, I want us to be really cautious in that area about the fire danger. Um, you know, I know that that our police chief is um in touch with Seaside Police Chief and they and they've been talking about, you know, that area, but I just want to make sure because of that P G N E substation being right there, if anything happens to that, you know, something over there or if a transformer blows, we can have a serious problem on our hands. So I just want to make sure that this area is getting as much attention to with fire abatement as other parts of the city is. And that that's my only comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. We are going to uh see who else is out there and um going to unmute Esther and let's um some lower hand. Sorry, a couple steps here. We welcome back Kathy. Thanks again.
Thank you. Um, I just had a real quick question. I I had attended the last J P A and the last regional parks meeting, and there was a statement made that the Fortag had done an actual environmental report on Laguna Grande Park and that had had needed to be approved before they could start their process. Is there not any way for the J P A or for the City of Monterey to piggyback on that E I R since they are connecting up? It's the same park? Uh, that would be my only question. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get the answer for you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy. Uh, next uh next up here is going to be uh Michelle Cry. Welcome, Michelle.
Hello. I just want to say that I am thrilled. I think it was three years ago that we first addressed the city council and I just felt like our neighborhood feels like we have been heard, you know, even though it seems that the process has been very slow uh. You know, the pandemic certainly slowed things down, but to know that we're finally moving forward, it just it just wanted to say thank you, especially Kimberly Cole, who didn't get up and actually prioritize parts of the park as far as the safety aspect for ours. And it this project's not only going to address the safety, but I think in the long run, it's going to be something that a lot of people will benefit for for a long time. And I did really like Tyler's idea of having an outreach meeting um after the environment impact report is done. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. And uh that concludes public comment.
All right, back to the council. I'll entertain him. Oh, yes.
If Kim could address the question about the uh
Yes, thank you.
Fortag E I R.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, I'd be happy to do that. Um, so the Fortag Trail um goes through the City of Del Ray Oaks and um crosses North Fremont Street and enters the park at the intersection of Highway eighteen and North Fremont. Their their environmental impact report then only covered the trail um going through the middle of the park. It did not include the vegetated area that we're looking at in more depth with this project, which was the primary concern um of people that have participated in the J P A. I do have a map if you want me to show you the map if that was unclear, but that's basically it. They're they're slightly different project areas that we are making sure will all connect through our various efforts.
Good. That's a good clarification. Thanks so much. All right, we ready for a motion?
Mayor, I just have one more comment.
Yes, please. Councilmember Dan.
I I'd like to publicly thank the City of Seaside and the Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District for partnering with the City of Monterey in helping in this area because we all know this area has had its its challenges. And I think uh cities and organizations working together, that's how you get things done. And so I I really want to reach out to thank those those two organizations for helping us with that. With that, I'll make the motion to um authorize the the appropriation of funds.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. And let's be sure that we do copy this to our um J P A board members as well. So they've been super supportive of this whole project. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes, that carries five oh. We have a public appearance item to adopt the resolution for an M O U with two labor groups in our city.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Another example of our employees stepping up and helping during these really difficult fiscal times. On, city manager, please.
Yeah, this will be an item for uh O H R Director Alison Hawk.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just really wanted to briefly explain to you that what we're doing here is extending the contracts for the M A M E A group, which is the Monterey Executive Management Association. That's our executive team. Their contract is due to expire June thirtieth of twenty twenty one, and they've agreed to extend it with no um additional increases until next June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. We are also looking to extend the contract for the general employees of Monterey. Um, that is our largest bargaining unit of our miscellaneous non-management employees. They have also agreed to extend their contract, which expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty one a year. They'll extend it for a year till June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Um, that will put all of our contracts, our labor contracts, our seven labor contracts, those will now all expire um June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. The other groups have already extended it, so now we will have all of them um extending in the about a year from now. If you have any questions?
All right, any questions from our our council? I can't tell if our uh Ed or Tyler have any questions since I don't see them.
None here. Uh, none here, ma'am.
I know you're there. I was just wondering if you had a question.
Thanks.
Okay. And public comment?
Uh, looks like no public comment here at the council chambers and none online on Zoom either.
All right. Then I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa. I'm sorry, whoops. Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes, and I've been saying all night that passed five oh, but it's four oh unanimously. Okay. Well, I don't think we have an opportunity to go closed session for ten minutes. Doesn't that that's okay? We'll possibly get it to to it this evening, perhaps not, but we do try to reserve that fourth Wednesday of the month to make sure that we can do closed session if we need to at that at that time. I don't know if any of that is time sensitive. We can wait.
Yeah, I uh let me let me talk, think about this and advise you during the break.
Okay, very good. All right, with that, we'll uh recess and we'll we'll either see you or zoom you at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Our council meeting, everybody. We're so glad you're here with us. To our evening session, which is going to be budget, budget, budget. And before we do anything else, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I speak for America, to the Republic of America, to the nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we, we're going to go to continue public comments, but before we do that, it's always our custom to ask our sensational city clerk to introduce the caring city council, please.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa is absent. Councilmember Smith?
I'm present.
Councilmember Williamson?
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yep, I'm here as well. Do we need to review participation? We did that this afternoon. We don't, we have one public member welcome and that do we normally in the evening session? Let's, let's do that. We'll ask our sagacious city assistant city manager to explain how folks can participate.
Sounds good. We're gonna actually have Clementine briefly describe some of the processes for in-person participation and then I'll follow with the online.
Yes, welcome back. We're glad to be back in our council chamber thanks to our community's lowered COVID-19 case rates and the successful vaccination efforts of many heroes, including our own city staff. The city of Monterey is committed to the safe public attendance of its public meetings. The rules for attending this meeting in person are as follows. No entry if you have experienced any COVID-19 symptoms over the last 48 hours. You tested positive for COVID-19 or maybe sick with COVID-19. Or you have been in close physical contact in the last 14 days with anyone known or suspected to have COVID-19. In-person participation is limited to 15 members of the public in order to maintain a required six feet of social distance. Seats are clearly marked with green sit here and red do not sit here labels. When the meeting room capacity has been reached, any additional members of the public must queue outdoors with six feet of social distance until there is a seat available. All participants must wear a protective facial covering or mask at all times, including when speaking. Food and beverages must be consumed outdoors during a break. And please keep phones and device speakers muted in order to prevent audio interference or feedback. Welcome back.
As we carefully return to more normal activities, the city of Monterey seeks to continue to offer virtual methods in the public participation process. And what we ask is that if you aren't joining us in person here at the city council chambers, you can participate in two different ways. The first is to join directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And the second is to call directly into the meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom using your computer, smartphone or telephone, please use the link or the phone number that's listed on the agenda at icertchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, please dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Then enter the meeting ID, which is 1607729333 pound. And if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, please press pound one more time. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you've dialed in by phone, please be sure to raise your hand by dialing star nine. And then again unmute yourself by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. We do ask that you stay within a time limit that we will be establishing for today's meeting. And we'll also show a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. The meeting is also being streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay. So keep that in mind when you're looking at the timer. And then also on Comcast channel 25 with a 90-second delay. And as always, we look forward to receiving public comment from you this evening.
Thanks so much. Well done. All right. Continued public comments. Anyone who'd like to address the council on something not on the agenda? If you have thoughts on the budget, please wait until we get to that. And we'd like to hear from you within the jurisdiction of Monterey, please, if possible. And you can always leave a contact with our city staff will get back to you or contact the city at suggest@monterey.org. And you've got a city that really does have wonderful responses and high level of service. We really do want to hear from you and help you, especially if you have a concern. Thank you. So always appreciated as well. Do we have a comment now?
It appears that we have one person for items not on today's agenda and the speaker is Kayla Gomez. Kayla, welcome.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Kayla Gomez and I'm a program assistant with Santa Cruz Community Ventures. I actually came here today to share an update on Undaki Fund Monterey Bay, which is a collaborative initiative to support undocumented workers impacted by COVID-19 and the wildfires. Through this initiative, we were able to support, we were able to support 1,178 families in Monterey, 1,009 of which had young children, giving out a total of 1,445,120 to undocumented families in Monterey County alone. And overall, we provided over $4 million in relief aid and made calls and texts to inform previous recipients about taxes, rent assistance and more. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you calling in. Let's see who else has joined us today. And looks like for items not on tonight's agenda, it was just Kayla Gomez. So back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Thank you, Nat. That was good to hear that, that news as well. We're going to go right into then the presentation leading to a resolution to adopt the 2021-22 operating budget. What I'd like to do first of all is simply thank our entire team and staff for putting this together, not only during a pandemic, a $30 million revenue loss over the last 14 months. But then we had a finance director who moved on, an assistant finance director who moved on and a budget analyst vacant position. And at that point, people really did pull together. I won't embarrass you with names. You know who you are. But the entire team pulled together to come up with a budget led particularly by our very smart city manager. And I understand the assistant city manager played a real vital role to fill the gaps that we had. And so budgets on any circumstances are difficult. Councilmember Dan knows that, having done a few million of them for the school district. But you can imagine if you lose three key staff members while you're putting a budget together, that just compounds it. Put a pandemic on top while you're at it. So a very special thanks and also compliments for the team to reach out and bring in some consultants and some experts to help fill the gaps. So I think each one of you personally, as well as the team, really stepped up to the plate in such a fantastic way. I'll spare you my usual introductions. I was going to get into measure G and fiscal emergencies and, and measure J, measure S and so on. But tonight is really, this culmination, we're looking at the budget all the time. It's, it's not something that we just do once a year. And it's just like at home, you have to have a budget and you have to have money to pay for things. And so tonight's presentation is going to hit the highlights. And I think it's a budget that does a lot for the expectations that we have out there. And if the questioning from the council doesn't seem to be really elaborate, it's because we do this all the time. And it may be elaborate, but this, and again, I always like to remind us that a budget's a snapshot. It will change. We'll be back here talking about it. I won't say anymore because I know our very smart city manager is going to do a fantastic presentation. But thank you sincerely for what you do for the city staff.
All right.
I know. Usually I tend to go on a little more, huh? Surprise me.
No, you, you can go on until you vote. It's fine with me.
As long as I vote the right way.
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for, for your kind introduction. I, I, I wanted to thank our team after the vote is taken. But, but thank you for highlighting that this is really a team effort and that we had a lot of challenges to putting it all together. The mayor is correct. Every three months, we, we updated the council about the budget since we entered into the COVID-19 crisis and probably our first really budget meeting we had in April 2020. And since then, almost, or at least every three months, we, we talked budget. So tonight I'm presenting to you an annual budget. We usually approve a biannual budget. But the circumstances with respect to the forecasting, the projected revenues just forced our hand to, to give you an annual budget because we feel this is really something we can oversee as much as we can. Giving you a two-year forecast is a little adventurous even today when we have over 60% of the population vaccinated. With that, next slide, please. Let's talk, let's talk budget. And when we talk budget, we, we, we start with, with a little reflection about the past 12 months. Next slide, please. The good news is that in 2018, the council set already the course. We, we started doing things differently in 2018, which in effect helped us through 2020. Next slide, please. And here's, here's what we did. As council will recall, in 2018, for the first time, I think it was in March or April, we spoke about introducing a fiscal health response plan. And what we wanted to do is we wanted to highlight that we have to look, continue to look into the city's infrastructure. And in 2018, we were able to extend the measure P. It became measure S and it was approved by 82% of the voters. So we, we laid the foundation for the extension of measure P actually in, in that session in April 2018. We, we highlighted a few other topics that we need to tackle with respect to creating a fiscal health response plan. Those were our employees, salaries and our benefits. We realized that a great deal of our taxpayer dollars is invested in, in service levels and those services are delivered by our employees. And we took it upon ourselves to basically say, let's look at our salaries. Let's look at our benefits. We also realized that Monterey is a full-service city, but how much services do we really are delivering? And what are actually the service needs? So we wanted to look at that as well. Our fifth, our fourth bullet point were dealt with the revenue projections and revenue enhancements. And that's kind of city manager talk for, we wanted to look at our fees, adjust our fees. And revenue enhancement, we wanted to look at what additional possibilities do we have? I.e. are there opportunities to adjust taxation? Are there opportunities to, to adjust other fees or create fees? And last but not least, the biggest challenge to every city's budget in, in the state of California is pension, are the pensions? And we wanted to deal also with CalPERS. Next slide, please. So here's what we did then. In 2018, in 2019, we went into the labor contract negotiation with a clear guidance given to, to us by the council in collaboration and discussion with the council. We wanted to adjust our salaries. We wanted to adjust our benefits to really reflect what is the standard right now in the municipal labor market. And you see a check mark there. We did that. We haven't completed it and that's a work in progress. But our labor contracts that came out of that round of negotiations are reflective of adjusting the expenses in employee cost. We looked at service level, service needs. And one of the outstanding initiatives from that time was the, the parking initiative. We, we looked at various aspects of our parking operation. And the largest one has been implemented in 2020. This is actually a very technology-driven initiative that is very successful. And it allows us also to really look on a almost hourly basis at our parking revenues and where we have to allocate resources. And then we took a good hard look also in 2019 at our revenue projections and revenue enhancements. We changed some of the ways how we are charging our, our internal costs against each other. You can imagine the finance department, the city attorney's office, they are working in the support function. But other ways also to, to allocate cost back towards those departments in order to recover some of those costs. So we changed a little, we changed quite, quite a bit our internal charge system. We also adjusted fees for the first time in, I believe, five years, we adjusted the fees and parks and recreation. And we also proposed park modest parking increases, parking fee increases. That also, reading check mark, launched successfully. And CalPERS is again a threat there. There's not a lot we can do about it. But we, there are probably some ideas in the future that we can do there. And then 2020 came around. Next slide, please. And with 2020, we, we filled our reserves. In February 2020, we allocated enough money from our ending balance from the previous fiscal year into our fund for economic uncertainty. And for the first time in the history of the city of Monterey, the reserves were filled at 16.6%. And today I did a little bit more research and I can tell you that about 10 years earlier, our reserves were about 6% at that time in 2010. So over time, we, we were able to fill it up to 16.6%. That was in February 2020. And also council had approved a sales tax measure. And that sales tax measure, measure G, was approved mid-March as a general sales tax measure with 62% of the votes from the, from the Monterey, Monterey voters. And then what also in 2020 happened, and that is a part probably of the, the COVID devastation in our budgets. We, we discussed to increase the TOT. We had a broad support from, from our neighbors and also support for, for many other folks that have an informal say here in the city of Monterey. And this was approved then by the voters with 71, almost 72%. And this was a special sales tax measure because it also included to pass the increase of the TOT on to our neighborhood community improvement program. And here, here is, is already one of the rewards that, that we highlight tonight is for next fiscal year 2122, those 2% will bring us an additional $3 million in revenues. So again, we, we were lucky that we had a lot, a lot of things already going for us. And then when the COVID-19 pandemic hit, we had, we had been prepared to a certain extent. Before I go into a proposed budget, I want to go a little bit more back into the past 15 months. Next slide, please. I think it's important that, that, that we take a look at that because it explains what is our starting point and what's the endpoint also for fiscal 2120. Next slide, please. Every story has a beginning, a middle and an end, but not, not necessarily in that order. And that, that's a quote by, by a French director. Germany lost today against France in Germany lost today against France in in the Euro Cup. But I still kept the quote in because it's good.
That's the end.
The the every story has a beginning, a middle, and an end, not necessarily in that order, as described in our painting when we kicked off the fiscal health response plan. In 2020, as I showed you, we were we were for all intents and purposes well within the middle of our planned health, fiscal health recovery efforts. So we were in the middle when COVID-19 struck. And then we actually went to the edge. We actually faced the end of the city of Monterey because we were actually approaching a point of fiscal fiscal insolvency. We were actually approaching bankruptcy. Next slide, please. We we described it to you about a year ago as a black swan event. And that 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 is an expression that was introduced in two thousand nine, two thousand eight through the book, The Black Swan Event: The Impact of the Highly Improbable. And a black swan event is 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 an unpredictable event that goes way beyond what you normally expect and that has very severe consequences. But black swan events are also characterized characterized that at the end, everyone is saying, we'll tell you, we told you so. We always knew something like that could happen. When you look at at the event of COVID-19, discussions about pandemics had been going on for for a long, long time. And when when those events were described, pandemic outbreaks, they talked about economic consequences, but nobody really prepared for that. And so Am I missing something?
I don't have them either, Tyler.
I don't either.
Can anybody?
I just.
Okay, thank you.
I just texted.
Wasn't just me.
Did you text that?
I texted that.
Thank you.
Is Hans in the chamber or is he?
He's in the chambers.
He's in the chambers.
All right. So I guess we lost the entire feed into the chamber.
On my monitor, it said low bandwidth, and then it shut down. So that's horrible. Checking the CMO right now.
Okay. Yeah, it got a little bit wobbly there a little bit just before. Is anybody close to a TV so you can see what's happening on Channel twenty-five?
We can hear you. Can hear, can you hear us?
Yep.
We hear you now. It's scratchy, but we hear you now.
We were taking a five-minute recess right now. There seems to be a problem with Zoom.
Of course there is.
Well.
Hans, we're.
Are you sure it's Zoom? Because I think.
We just lost your feed into the chamber.
You know. I I heard I heard a little bit from from Hans and Matt, and then what happened, what it did is on our monitor here is the low bandwidth, and then it and then it shut down. I, are you saying anything now? Um, can you hear my microphone?
Testing one, two, three. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Back up. Yep. Testing one, two, three. Do you hear us on Zoom?
Yeah, we can hear you on Zoom. How about you?
Uh, let me check you.
All right.
Gremlins.
Okay, we're gonna resume now. Okay, we're gonna.
All right. Okay, council, I will continue if that's.
Yes, we're on the caused and cities react.
Yeah, I I I start with the cities' reaction. I presented the causes that forced us to do to perform certain reactions. And one of them was, of course, that that COVID-19 pandemic forced us to close facilities and associated with those facilities, unfortunately, were a lot of services that we couldn't deliver. And with those, a lot of employees. And so overall, at that time, the council eliminated one hundred two positions with eighty-two positions filled with employees in the end. While we issued eighty-two employee layoff notices at that time, when the when we entered into June, July two thousand twenty, we laid off seventy-three employees. What we also did was with with great pains that we suspended the NCIP program and the CIP program. Together, that resulted in a allocation of fourteen point six million dollars that went back directly into the general fund. Across the board, our departments took additional voluntary budget reductions. And that led, and and that was an amount of seven point two million dollars. As council recall painfully, we we also pulled some one-time parachutes. We we didn't depreciate our vehicles and our equipment for a year as as one of those parachutes, if you remember. That added up to two point one million dollars. Over the course of the past twelve months, we dipped into one point five million dollars of our reserves. And also, our employees shipped in with voluntary pay reductions that were about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars worth. Next slide, please. But we kept the eye on the ball. We kept, yeah, we kept the eye on the ball. And we realized that we need to have an economy if we want to rebound one day. And so the council allocated around a million dollars from the parking fund and from the Titan funds combined, each fund five hundred thousand dollars into a local economic economic stimulus plan. That million dollars provided grants between five thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars to small businesses in the city of Monterey. Over eighty businesses were supported, and we started handing out those grants in May, June, July. I think even in September, we we still allocated some of those dollars. Realizing that a lot of folks had lost their jobs in the city of Monterey, we also went ahead and created the very first emergency rental assistance program in the county. And we used part of the funding that was allocated by the CDVG, but we used also a large amount of city housing funds that we are creating year after year through our many different housing programs than we have. That might be, for instance, somebody who received a loan from the city of Monterey to build twenty affordable housing units, and this developer is paying us back on an annual basis. This might be other properties that are generating moderate revenue. So we used those funds to create an emergency rental assistance program. We launched it with the very first payment, I believe, in August, and it was truly a regional program because you didn't have to live in Monterey in order to get the money. You you needed to have lost a job in Monterey, and then you would be eligible for the emergency rental assistance program. So we helped, we helped here over one hundred fifty-nine households with payments, over four hundred five payments, and then we depleted those funds by the end of January. I think we ran out of money. Thankfully, at that time, the state of California had received money through the CARES Act from the federal government. And we were able to attract another one point five million dollars through the county and United Way. And so far today, we have spent two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars on that and issued over one hundred fifty payments. Next slide. So what what the council and what the community need to realize is that the council's proactive leadership and through also a very transparent process, we were able to jointly move the city away from the edge of fiscal bankruptcy. We were in a real, real danger during those months. So instead of writing the end of the story, as in November twenty twenty, the state auditors was declaring the city of Monterey as one of almost the, one of those cities that is almost dead due to the losses in in hospitality revenues. We are now continuing to go back. We are moving back to the middle of our story. And our bold messages and our bold measures were working, and they were holding. And even though we had to go through a new stay-at-home order in December and early January, and even that hit our sales tax estimates and set us back by approximately another three months or so, we we could see the light already at that time. Next slide. So the key question for for the budget is, is COVID-19 over? And I I have the answer for you. Here it is. We don't know. And Secretary Ramsfeld in two thousand two and during a press conference, I I actually watched that and enjoyed it, said the following when when he was asked about the outcome of 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 the Afghanistan and Iraq engagement. And he said, there are known unknowns. That is to say that there are things that we know we don't know. But there are also unknown unknowns. There are things we don't know and we don't know. So COVID-19 is 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 it, is there an end? When you watch the KSPW show today at six o'clock, seemed like everyone was agreeing that we are back to normal. But the question is, are we really back to normal? So we really don't know. So one of the elements of our budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two is to still have that kind of fear in the back of our head that even though the wolf is full right now and the farmers market is is visited, things can turn on a dime. And remember, black swan events, everyone will tell you it will not happen, and it will happen. So we have to be very much conscientious of that. So with that, I'm I'm moving now actually into the budget twenty-one, twenty-two. Next slide, please. And here's a word cloud that we created out of the budget narrative. And these are basically the 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 size of the words are created by the word clouds based on the number of frequencies they are used in our budget narrative. And and when you when you look at at this building, at built of of words, you see city, you see million, you see services, you see revenues. But in small, you can also see sports center. You can see conference center. You can see library. You can see a lot of those things that are in our narrative. Of course, TOT is standing out, sales tax is standing out. So please, next slide. Here's the good news upfront. The budget is balanced. We have created the revenues based on conservative but optimistic estimates. What do I mean by that? When we had, when we looked at the numbers and we felt those numbers were overly conservative, we went back to the appropriate managers. And we said, do you really think that this is the revenue that your your division will accomplish this year? Could we be a little bit more optimistic? And so I feel very comfortable that the revenue estimates that we are giving to you are not not overly optimistic, but they are also not overly conservative. Another element of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two is that we have no money for new programs. So anything what we are doing right now is maintaining the status quo. These are the things that we that we have must do, meaning maintain current service levels and staffing levels. And then our other priority is we have to restore our service levels in our library, in the sports center. We have to reopen our senior center, that's the Schultz Center. We have to fill up again Hilltop Park Center, Alastero Park Center. We are reopening the conference center. Yesterday, I got an email from a from a longtime employee from the conference center who we laid off, and he said, hi, this is Stone, so your new employee. And he he is coming back or he is back now helping us in the conference center. That was a nice email. We have, we are also restoring the NCIP. The NCIP will receive again funding out of our sixteen percent out of the hotel tax, the sixteen percent that is per charter allocated to the NCIP. And it was important to staff to restore NCIP because, as I showed you, they were giving us quite a lot last year to get us through the difficult times. We also will put money back like last year at this time. We will reinvest into green belt fuel reduction. Even though we have facilities that are in dire need for paint jobs, carpet replacements, et cetera, we need to take those precious dollars and reinvest them in green belt fuel reduction. Our other guiding principle was we want to continue to preserve the reserves. COVID-19 end is inside, yes. But headlines that you hear today is that you hear today is that the Delta variant is rapidly developing. It is affecting transmitting ten times faster than than any other variant right now. That's the variant variant that is affecting the the folks in India. But you also, we also know already that the variant is here in the United States, and it will hit the non-vaccinated. That's if there's a little bit of good news with the Delta variant. Those of us who were able to get the vaccine are in less likely to get affected by the Delta variant. But if you look at some of those numbers that we have in in the city of Monterey, vaccination data, also in the county and the state and also nationwide, the Delta variant has the potential to affect non-vaccinated. So it's important to preserve the reserves because we still don't know what may or may not happen. Next slide. This is the key message that I want you to please remember. The budget is only balanced because the American Rescue Plan Act contained an allocation of six point five million dollars that was part of of the funding that the federal government approved mid-March. Yesterday, at at four oh one, I received an email from the U.S. Treasury that asked me to sign for the first installment. At four oh two, I had signed it and sent it back. The point here is we need that funding. We need it very, very fast. We will receive it in two installments. One installment will come in the next couple of days, and the other half will come about a year later. But all of the six point five million dollars are part of our budget. And if we would not have the six point five million dollars, we would not do all the things, we could not fund all the things that I'm going to explain to you in greater detail in a few minutes. So we need to be totally aware that what that means also is that next year, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we better have six point five million dollars more in revenues to pay for what we are restoring right now. Okay, so without the six point five million dollars, you will not open the library. You will not reopen the sports center. We will not do a lot of things. If we don't have six point five million dollars in additional revenues for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we might have to go to other measures again. Okay, next slide. Here, here's one part of the story. The the American Rescue Plan funds are distributed on a different key than just revenue losses. The purpose of this chart is to show you that the communities have received funding based on a formula which considers the socioeconomic factors of the affected community. So stated differently, it didn't matter that the city of Monterey lost thirty-two million dollars. We only received six point five million dollars because the factors leading to six point because the factors leading to $6.5 million are a formula that is preferencing less wealthy communities than Monterey. And that's, that's the secret. So the ARPA funds that are being distributed through the US Treasury, almost 20% of those revenue losses we can make up with the $6.5 million, $6.5 million that we receive. You see, of course, other communities that are luckier. Those communities are, for instance, Salinas stands out with an increase of 525% in ARPA funds. They get over $50 million for revenue losses that were a little over $10 million. And you, you see the other communities there as well. So we, we need to be aware of that. And this has an effect also on the future of the city. And I will get to that also in a couple of minutes. Next slide, please. So here's the secret. Here's the budget. We are back to an 80 million plus budget. Our general fund for next fiscal year is estimated to be $81 million. Our other funds consisting out of sewer fund, parking fund, storm water fund, tideland fund, cemetery fund, et cetera, will be collectively around $65.7 million. So our city will have a budget of $146.7 million. Now, if you take the $6.5 million out of the $81 million, you are coming closer to a budget that we approved in fiscal year 16, 17. So without the $6.5 million, we are honestly on a budget level of fiscal year 16, 17, five-year setback. Next slide. Here, here's what, what the proposed budget buys you. The $81 million of general fund will restore 6.5 full-time employees at the sports center. That's in addition to the employees that we already brought back into the sports center like a facility coordinator, like an aquatics coordinator. In addition to those, 6.5 will be coming back. We are actually hopeful that in July, we will have again the sports center reopen on Sunday again. So we very, we're seeing an increased demand and we are allocating 6.5 full-time employees to the sports center. Now, the detail of that is that the sports center funding and the sports center revenues still show a difference of over $2 million right now. So whatever we, what, what we expect as revenue estimates and what we expect as cost to maintain the sports center will require a $2 million fiscal support from the general fund to keep the operation going. The recreation division consisting out of three employees right now will receive another 2.75 folks with the intent to bring back the Schultz Park Center. Remember, the Alliance for Aging was talking to us when we went into the budget iterations and a year ago and said, bring back the Schultz Parks and to bring it back. So it's important for us to bring that institution back. And you all know that a lot of our seniors are enjoying the program there. We are reopening the library also, set for some time in July, probably post-July 15, where people can go actually back into the library. This is what we are bringing back, the budget that the Library Board of Trustees requested and wanted. This is what the Library Board of Trustees put together and it includes bringing back 5.75 FTEs. But also importantly, it will bring back the bookmobile, which will help to drive into neighborhoods that are a little bit too far away from the library and are also probably populated by, by folks who we really need to support and show them all the programs that our library has to offer. We actually found part-time money and are able to open the Colton Hall Museum for limited hours just through part-time help. And then the last bullet point of that slide is a detail, a record management software for the police department. MPD has to come into compliance with new reporting requests, requirements imposed through state and federal law. Our existing software is also outdated. And so $400,000 will go towards the purchase of that and $100,000 will be needed in the first year just to get it up and running and servicing it. Next slide. We will restore two positions in the police department. One was the frozen position of the Assistant Police Chief. We are bringing the police Assistant Police Chief back just for, for many good reasons. But we also have a void there in the leadership and we need to build succession planning there. And we are backfilling another frozen police officer position to ensure that our team is sufficiently prepared to, to cover the multitude of events, the multitude of visitors that we have here in the city. We're changing another public safety position in Public Works to fund an additional social worker as part of our demand or our own intentions to respond to certain calls with social workers. As council know, right now, we have five different organizations working out of the Monterey Police Department. We have a social worker paid for and employed by Montage Health who is working side by side with our community action team to help homeless, to help people with mental disabilities. We'll change one of our public safety position to fund an additional social worker and that will be a partnership between the Monterey County and hopefully the city of Marina. We bring back with $3.3 million the NCIP. That's the funding that will come that we estimate out of next year's revenues of TOT. We also will bring back 6% of the TOT towards the MCCBB, which is the group that will need to boost the advertisement for our destination in order to fill our conference center and to fill our hotels and our restaurants. As I stated, 300,000 goes towards green belt fuel reduction. We're bringing back group sales and operations into the conference center with 3.75 full-time employees. We bring back employees into the Marina and we restore a position in housing. That position went away last year because we took the funding of that position and allocated it to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Now, with all the additional programming that we foresee for housing, we have to have that person back. So we are restoring also one position in housing. And then to make everyone happy and leave with a smile on their face, we are also bringing back the trolley services. And we restore the trolley services just on weekends, starting July 4. And that's a unique partnership that, that we were able to form through MST and the Monterey Bay Aquarium and the city of Monterey. Usually, the trolley services are funded by the city of Monterey and with 20% coming from the Monterey Bay Aquarium. This year, MST stepped up, volunteered also, and it is a, is a distribution key of 40, 40, 20% of the cost shared between city, MST and Monterey Bay Aquarium. Next slide. Here are our top five general fund revenues. TOT is still the main revenues. TOT for the general fund will be $17.6 million. So that's the clean number without the NCIP in there. So if you add $3.3 million into that number, that's the total TOT we estimate for next fiscal year. But the 70.6 is the number that we estimate to receive in the city of Monterey without the NCIP. We hope that we will have fees and charges of $13.5 million. That includes a sports center fee estimate, membership fee reimbursements there at the tune of $1.3 million. That includes building fees, building inspection fees, recreation fees, et cetera. Property tax is at $13 million. It's, it has increased by around 5% from the previous year. You can see that all around us when you see that lesser attractive buildings in our neighborhood go for, for top dollars right now. That's the effect also on the property tax. Sales tax, we estimate to be $11.6 million. Again, that's a number that is based on the analysis by our sales tax consultants, HDL. They are keeping a close eye on Monterey sales tax, but also on the sales tax of many other communities. They cover around 80% of the state of California. What we can clearly see is that the consumers have shifted towards online sales and you can see that in our sales tax. And so our sales tax revenues are $11.6 million. That's still higher than it was a year ago or two years ago. But let's not forget, we have added a 5.5% increase into the sales tax that, that became effect July 1st last year. So again, this, the sales tax is higher than it would normally be because in 2020, again, we were smart enough to put tax measures in front of the voters and the voters were smart enough to vote yes for it. The intergovernmental revenues are $7.7 million. They are a lot higher than in normal years. And again, 6.5 million of that comes from the federal administration in Washington. Next slide. Here's the, the traditional breakdown by department. You see, general government consumes about 10% of the general fund expenses. Public Works, 8%. Now, you need to know that Public Works uses a lot of special funds, parking fund, tideland funds, Marina fund, sewer fund, storm drain fund, et cetera. Police with 25%, fire with 29%. Fire slightly higher because they also have the contractual agencies with city of Carmel, city of Pacific Grove, city of Sand, as well as the airport district. And I think I forgot one. Maybe, I don't know. And my apologies if I forgot one. Conference center at 5%, community development at 5%, library and museum at 3%. They were at 4% pre-pandemic. And parks and recreation again at 15%. They were at 18% pre-pandemic. Okay, next slide. Here's where we spent the money. The good part is 90% of our expenses is going on direct service programs. And the fifth agency that I forgot was the Navy La Mesa. And it just came to me because the, because I just remembered. So 90% of expenses are spent on direct services. 77% of our salaries, of our expenses go towards salaries and benefits. That's not an unusual number. When, when you present this number to, to residents or to neighborhoods, those who are hearing the number for the first time, they, they always are taking a deep breath. But when you then start explaining that services are delivered by people and not by, by machines, they understand that. 12% goes to supplies and 10% to internal services funds, that, that is IT costs, et cetera. And then 1% to capital outlay and 1%, less than 1% to debt service. Next slide. Here's the position control summary. A year ago, our biennial budget for 2021 proposed 497, 491.25 positions, 491.25 positions. That was the pre-pandemic projected position control summary for that year. Fast forward a year, a year later, our city will have, if you choose to do so, 427.75 employees. So we are about seven people leaner in, in the next year. Next slide. So when, when you, when you try to estimate five-year forecasts and trends, you, you, you get to a point where, where it becomes a little bit too difficult to forecast. So I ask you to, to focus on the ending balance for fiscal year 21, 22. We, we project right now that we have a positive ending balance of $200,000. When, when you look at the overall numbers and you consider the transfer in, the transfer out and, and all the different categories there, we, we project a deficit of $1.3 million for next fiscal year. For the following fiscal year, increasing to 1.8, 2.2, 2.0 and 2.0. Now, council, you remember when we talked about fiscal health emergency and we talked about emergency measures, those numbers were 2.8, 3.8 and 5.8 deficits. So you see that, that the mix that we have created through tax measures, but also through the reductions that we have right now in services, it changed our forecasted operating deficit. And it still shows us significantly in the red, but the, the numbers in the red are not 5.8. They are 2.0 for that year. So the $1.3 million deficit that we are facing for fiscal year 21 and 22 does not, does not take into consideration the potential of the ending balances that we will have accomplished by the end of this fiscal year. As council knows, at the end of each fiscal year, we are closing all the books and we are conducting the audits. And then probably by November, December, we can report back to you what is the ending balance. Right now, we are projecting an ending balance that will cover that deficit easily. However, again, the books are not closed on that and we have to see where we actually end up the fiscal year. So this is our five-year projection. And now, if you assume all things are equal, next slide, please. You will see our five-year forecast using the reserves, how we are depleting the reserves if we want to balance our budget using the reserves. And again, this is a slide that we show year after year after year. It shows you all things equal. This is what will happen. It does not take in consideration revenue increases. It does not take into consideration other, other enhancements that we can make that will help us to not really get into that scenario. Next slide. Pension cost. We, we continue to, to have a curve there or a bar charts that keep going up. The, we estimate that the pension liability will increase by about $1.5 million each year. So we have to make up $1.5 million every year just to keep up with the pension cost. Now, the, the good news is that, that our city employees also voluntarily are participating in the, in the cost share of that and are paying 3%, respectively 5% for, for public safety into CalPERS as well of the employer's share. So that really helps us out. Next slide. So I'm coming to the conclusion of my presentation. The budget is only balanced because we used one-time federal funds. The budget will maintain our current service levels that we have today in the city and it will allow us to face and restoration of services in the sports center, recreation and library. I can tell you that our department hats, the library director, there's a director in the sports center and in the recreation center, they are just waiting for the green light from this council to call back, let people, to have them start sometime in July, first week of July. So the budget will allow us to face and restore services and people will be receiving callbacks, hopefully starting as early as tomorrow. Unfortunately, there is no funding available for new programs. There is no funding available for new programs unless you make changes to the proposed budget, of course. But if you want to restore those services, if you want to maintain existing services, unfortunately, the funding for available new programs has to be tabled. And the the one message that I shared with you when I showed you that chart where all the other cities have the additional, the additional funding through the American Rescue Plan Act. What I said to you at that get back to that in a few minutes. And here's what I get back to you with. You will hear when you are meeting with the mayors, you will hear when you're meeting at Tamsi or with county supervisors or when you have groups that are that are meeting of engaged lawmakers, you will hear new programs that other cities will start. The time for Monterey is not to participate and play with them because we do not have the funding in place. Other cities can start new programs. They can start services that they have maybe never have seen before because the funding is there and there will be the push for regionalization and participation. I want to caution you, we don't have the money to play. We can be there in spirit, we can support, we can give them our input. But unfortunately, our twenty percent that we receive for the hundred percent of losses and revenues doesn't help us to to participate in those programs. Our budget revenues do not consider that we may have potential cannabis revenues through to cannabis taxation and cannabis fees. Council recalls that we estimate that depending on what solution the council wants to implement anywhere between additionally four hundred thousand to one point four million dollars. We will continue to check the numbers on a daily basis. We will continue to monitor our economic recovery and keep you, the council, updated. We we have to do it. Get it done and put a green check mark next to culprits. We need to look at how are we dealing with those escalating pension costs and we didn't have an actuarial reporting to you last fiscal year about where we are with our pension costs this year. We will dedicate a full session again to bring an actuarial here and then after that meeting with the actuarial, we we need to sit down and discover how can we tackle those pension obligations. We started a good tradition last year in in April when we gave you a lot of updates. We will continue to do that. We it's important for us to keep you informed. And as the mayor said, you've heard the budget numbers many times before, you you know what's going on. We will bring back probably in December this year our first comprehensive list of budget amendments. And I am quietly hopeful that that we can bring back more people and more suggestions for restoring services, all things equal. And last but not least, we have unmet facility needs. You remember last year, the library board presented to you their options for a brand new or for new library building. We have a public safety building that is falling apart right now in in one specific restroom and will require probably a six digit figure to to ensure that that facility is is clean and 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 hygienic. So we have a lot of unmet facility needs and we have to address those as well. And I'm pretty sure that that we will find good solutions for that. So with that, council, I'm open for your question and I hope that you can approve the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two.
And thank you for that.
Thank you, Hans, for that very thorough outline. A lot of information to digest, obviously. But again, we've been studying this and will continue to study it. For those folks at home, you can always find the report on our agenda packet if you go to Monterey dot org. And I would they go to the budget or I search and find it on the website if you want some of the details because many of the things that a very smart city manager shared with you is in writing in front of us. If you wonder why perhaps that my my head is swiveling, it's because I'm going Zoom here and on this computer actually got the staff reports and the entire agenda saving three hundred and eighty three pages of paper. So questions, we'll save our comments until after public comment, but right now, questions from the council with respect to the presentation that we just heard. If I could see my council members, there they are. Council member Ed, would you like to start off with some questions, please?
Yeah, just a brief question and I anticipate it may come up from some of the public questions. So I wanted to ask Hans, I know that it's hard to project any of the future, but can you report on the T O T trend as we've heard in the most recent previous report and the previous report? So we we rely heavily on the T O T. So if you might be able to address how that is tracking currently and some of the projections that the Monterey County Convention Visitors Bureau has been able to provide for us.
Yeah, thank you, council member Smith. Our T O T is collected every every month by the fifteenth, collected for the previous month. Today is the fifteenth. I I checked the numbers actually at lunchtime. And there were quite, there were like three, four large scale hotels that hadn't submitted yet. And that will probably happen by by the end of of tonight electronically. But what I can tell you that our current T O T for this fiscal year is on track to to come in as we had hoped for at about fourteen point seven million dollars. I can, the 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 main data shows us an upwards tick of about ten to fifteen percent. That's what we projected as well. And I can tell also with you that the large hotels, the the large properties in in the city of Monterey are are performing pretty pretty well right now. So so with that, we we think that the T O T for fiscal year for the current fiscal year will be dismal, but it will be as dismal as projected at fourteen point seven million dollars. The so we we have, as we had hoped for, a good month of May and hopefully a better month of June. Conference Center will have the first conference next week. And we think also that this trend will continue, that the conferences are coming back sooner than we had anticipated. For next fiscal year, we have two, we had two competing models that that were that we had to consider. One model was the model that the M C C V B created and the other one was a model that that came from a destination marketing analytical company, S T R. And there was a difference between both estimates of about eight to ten million dollars. And so we we and and both groups had very sound reasons for for their estimates. We worked very closely over the past twelve months with the M C C V B and Paul Martin there, the finance director there and and our team compared notes on a daily week on a daily basis. Actually, on on Tuesdays, we we always learned what the M C C V B learned from the properties and we adjusted our model over and over and over again to have it really fine tuned. So the M C C V B is optimistically somewhere between twenty three to twenty five million dollars in T O T for the city of Monterey. The other model, S T R, is anywhere between fourteen to fifty million dollars. So you saw the numbers earlier, we are landing at around twenty two million dollars in our T O T estimate. So we 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 trust the M C C V B, but we are a little bit cautious. So that's that's our numbers for for next fiscal year. You can see also that the A D Rs, the average daily rate, is increasing. The hotels charging more for for their rooms again, and that is also a good trend because that also means that a more T O T goes into the coffers of of the city of Monterey. The other element that we often forget is that the T O T or the hotel guests also pay a a fixed fee per room to pay back for the conference center loans. And we have worked with the banks. We informed you also about this probably six months ago that we we worked with the banks for a while and we achieved a good understanding of our payments. The next real payment is due in December and which includes interest plus a principal payment of around three point three, three point five million dollars. And we think we can make that payment as well. Again, the city is not on the hook, the properties are on the hook, the hotel properties for the C C F Ds, but I think we are also with respect to the T O T question, council member Smith, well on track also to cover the C C F D costs.
Yeah, Ed, you're muted if you're still talking.
I got it. Thank you. Thank you, Hans, because I think that's so fundamental to what so many people need to know and that's the standard of what we're looking for for watching the trends to know what our future incomes will be. But thank you very much. That was the only question I wanted to cover. You covered it all very well. Thanks, Hans.
Good. Other questions? Council member Tyler, you, sir, will have a chance here very shortly. Would you do me a favor?
Sorry, he just used the microphone. It's not on the record. Right. Thank you.
Yeah, if if you'll do me a favor, we'll give we'll give you a chance during public comment, okay? Okay, thank you. Because otherwise, it's not recorded, it's not official. So we'd love to hear from you under public comments if you want to hang out. We'll let you know. Okay, thanks. We'll get we'll get to you shortly. All right, council member Tyler, did you have a question?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I do have a few and hopefully they're quick and easy. Answers, which I would ask. Are are we able to see an updated version of of our C I P or when can we expect to see that?
Yes, this will happen in July. As as you can tell, we allocate five hundred thousand dollars to the C I P. Three hundred thousand will go to green belt fuel reduction and the remaining two hundred thousand dollars, the public works director can spend it on anything he wants to do. So there will be two hundred thousand dollar in projects coming from the general fund, but then also the public work director will provide you with the list of projects with respect to road resurfacing and and other projects that are funded by the appropriate funds, sewer funds, storm stormwater fund, parking fund, et cetera. So we will have there a session coming to you in July, the probably the second meeting in July.
Okay, thank you for that. The next one is where are we at with collecting T O T from third party vendors?
Yeah, we we started the process actually in I want to say March, April was the last time that the finance department went out and communicated with a group of other cities that that potentially have experience in in collecting T O T from third party travel organizations like Expedia, Travelocity, Booking dot comics, et cetera. And then frankly, it stalled because we simply didn't have the capacity through the loss of the finance director and the assistant finance director to follow through with that and we had to focus on presenting to you this budget. So this is a work in progress. We started it and we keep on pushing on that.
Okay. And then in the staff report identifies that Hilltop and Elastow Park Centers will be opening before the Casanova Oak Knoll Center. And I was hoping that you could speak to kind of the strategy behind the why certain ones are opening before others.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Williams. That's that's an excellent question. And and the reason for that is that we we want, we intentionally want to fill up the appropriate centers and want to fill it up with full programming. It doesn't help us if we have three preschool classes filled at fifty percent at at three different centers. We 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 rather have the two or three classes full at capacity at the Hilltop Park and also at youth center. So with that systematic in mind, what we are trying to do is we we try to program our our facilities at the fullest extent possible because there is a certain fixed cost of operating them, whether we have two programs running in there or twenty. And of course, the fixed costs then are becoming more bearable if you can break it down over twenty programs instead of just two. So our current approach is to staff Hilltop Park and the youth center, both are actually fully staffed right now and operational. And then if we have other program needs, we will go back to Casanova Oak Knoll Neighborhood Center. So the cry priority right now is, as you indicated, Hilltop and Youth Center, we have already preschool classes and 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 both of those centers running. Other programs will follow and then if if demand still exists, we will open corner.
Beautiful. Thank you for the the response there. Then one last question, which is a multiple part one, but put it all in one. Regarding N C I P, how will we be prioritizing new versus old projects, given that we're starting from pretty much zero here? And then at what rate will the city actually anticipate being able to complete the backlog of projects if that's the the path that we're going to be going on of recognizing the the deficit and and maybe utilizing some other strategies, but also keeping in the cards the the support that could be provided towards helping us meet the the deficit in
Yeah, the that that's the key question. And the as the city manager, I will not dare to to suggest how the N C I P is planning to to allocate their projects. I understand that there may be a desire by the N C I P to meet in July to just go over that very question. And I understand also that one of the think models that they may entertain for their decision making to look at the approved projects over the past five to ten years, look at the ranking and then start with those projects that have the highest ranking. So to keep the example simple, projects that had that were ranked project priority number one of fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, nineteen are the projects that then get the first preferred funding and then it's project number two for the same fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, et cetera. But this is a decision that the N C I P will have to do to make. It is probably foreseeable to say that they will not go through the whole voting process again because to even create one set of projects one for one fiscal year is is a monumental task. So I would expect they will go back to the to the already approved projects and and discuss among themselves, how do they revitalize that? The question about the backlog, I I am too long in this job to tell you that we have an answer for that. We have tried a lot of things over the years to to eliminate the backlog. We we had various varying successes with that. We 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 will try to stay on top of that. The nature of N C I P projects is sometimes that it takes a lot of consensus building and then after the consensus has been built, sometimes projects still take a turn because the neighbor who was in favor of that has sold his or her home and the new neighbor really doesn't understand the philosophy of the project and we work with them. So that's one reason. The other reason is also that at a certain time, we really didn't have the staff resources allocated to that. And we we established this backlog. So I think the N C I P and the city have grown over the past years. The N C I P is is helping us for for funding the to it helps us funding positions, dedicated engineering resources who will only work on the N C I P projects. Last but not least, the N C I P is waiting for council's action tonight. And they bluntly refuse to sit down right now to talk about any future N C I P projects until they know the check is in the mail. And so your action to tonight will also unleash And so your action tonight will also unleash the NCIP program again. And I expect that their first meeting will be sometime in July.
That's it from my end. Thank you, Hans, for the very thorough responses and appreciate the time, Council.
Thanks for the questions. And just to add on, for someone who dared not go where you did go, you did an excellent job of describing the NCIP process as the originator of that program 35 years ago. I've attended almost all of their meetings and in discussion with some of the members. They are exactly doing that. They're barely not sure how they want to tackle it. But I think they will go after first high priority projects. That would be their initial re-refunding, if there's such a word. And so I think that's a great emphasis. And they are, they were, as you said, a little reticent to meet. Some of our boards and commissions have met during the pandemic. But NCIP said, we can meet, but if we aren't funded, what's the point? And so I've been in contact with some of the members and their leadership. And I think you were right on as how we're going forward. I think that first meeting is going to be very interesting. I'll be there. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have just one question. But first, Hans, thanks to your staff for putting this all together, especially you're so understaffed when it comes to your finance department. And you guys did a wonderful job. I do have a question on, because I always like to look at the forecasts. And it's great to see that the forecast for five years, I can't say it's great to see a deficit of 2.0 in five years, but it's a much better, it's a much better forecast than it was January of 2020, I believe. And that's great to see. But I do have a question about, well, it's also good to see that you, or at least your staff forecast that we're going, we will increase our revenue by 6.5 that we already received from the federal government. Keeping our fingers crossed that's going to happen. So my question is, how did you guys forecast the revenues of the next four years? Is there a formula you used for that? Or how did you guys do that?
I think we just used a percentage and inflated that number.
Okay, so it's whatever was in the past. Okay, that was it.
All right, we're going to go to public comment. First of all, we'll take any public comment for people who are here in person. And then we'll go to our Zoom friends or if someone who want to call in. Sir, thank you for your patience. If you'd like to come up to our podium, we'd like to hear what you have to share with us tonight.
My name is Jason Potts. I was, I'm an individual who's been consigned for war hundreds of times from Revolutionary Minuteman Order to World War I, World War II, even NOM. I've had multiple US Armed Forces. I've supported the Air Guard or Air Force Guard for Churchill. I am a third, fourth, and fifth Reich of the Nazi, which is a neutral ground state that consigns for war and establishes wartime effort. I'm a dictator of wartime effort. I'm an economic grandmaster and I own a guild. The Freemasons of America have stolen over $200 trillion of my money and 800,000 pounds of gold. There is no more gold standard. I have been the servant of the bones three times. I will not consign to do that again or consider it to be done again. So there is no gold standard in America. You have no economy. You have no way to pay for the cash, tender, or coinage that I have given you. I have a World Bank within Vegas. It is a six-dimensional support. I have Galactic Empires who I support. And Snickers might be a great endeavor to understand the way people take on responsibilities such as a candy and then cut off the line and connection of support. You have lost the medical industry's needles. You have lost Band-Aids. And it is Consignment Day for war. You will face a thousand-year war. You will have World of War and you will consign. Period. I am a dictator of war. I'm an armed forces Navy Admiral and Minuteman. And I have eliminated the colonies. There is no more colonies. Every single one of the established architectural engineering buildings in your lost America has been my endeavor. I have supported that from New York to every established architectural engineering design I've ever created. Some of the French Connection that was established here was done by the supporters of Captain Cook, which Azula, the mother of Captain Cook, is my mother. I am Captain Cook. I have been reincarnated, resurrected so many times that my daughters have been raped, tortured, and dragged down the line into the future. And you will recognize your 23 days with two months each year. And you will recognize within the 13 months, complete annihilation and death of women and females will happen. If there is not war, there is no support to have females. There will be a cannibalistic environment that you will be forced into. I supported a monastery as a monk, as an archdeacon, and now I am a magistrate. I want you to know for the last 87 years, since I was in a van, helping you guys with economy that I've been tortured, pissed on, and shit on and stolen from.
You need to wrap up your comments, please, your time is up.
There is no more computer credit line. There will be no more computer systems or credit. I am a crow. I am a creed. There are six bubonic plagues you guys must face. And Castle Black is no longer in allegiance with anyone.
Okay, well, I'm going to thank you for your comments, your time is up.
It's not a comment. It's a fact.
Well, I thank you for your comments. Thank you so much.
62 million Australians have been returned home.
For wearing your mask. We appreciate that, too. Thank you. All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience like to chat, share some thoughts? Okay, we'll go now to anyone online Zoom who would like to share with us or by telephone.
We do. And the first hand up is Sherry Flumerfelt. And Sherry, welcome. If you could unmute yourself, we'll hear from you.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for your time. I'm Sherry Flumerfelt. And as I know most of you, and I'm the Executive Director of the Monterey Bay Fisheries Trust.
Hi, Sherry.
Hi. I wish I could be there.
Yes, next time.
I would just like to extend my sincere appreciation for the city's support of our work to date and for the continued contributions allocated in this budget from the Thailand's Trust Fund. As a result of the city's investment in our close working relationship with the harbor and city staff, we've been able to accomplish a lot, even during this really challenging time with COVID. I sent each of you a copy of our 2020 Impact Report, which goes into more detail. But I just wanted to mention a few of the highlights. We've been working really hard to raise consumer awareness about local seafood in an effort to build and grow a sustainable seafood movement here in Monterey and to really help support those businesses that are involved with the fishing industry. We've been sharing stories about local seafood, what's in season, how it's caught, how to prepare it with 200,000 of followers on social media and our newsletter, producing videos and bios highlighting members of the fishing community from the fisherman to the fish buyer to the fish cutter, all of whom are essential to our historic local fishing economy. And at the beginning of the pandemic, we created an online local catch guide to drive residents to the restaurants and markets and dock sales that were selling local seafood. And to date, that page has received 30,000 views and it keeps increasing every day. And we're also working to increase fishermen's involvement in conservation and management. Just last week, in partnership with the harbor and local fishermen, we launched the Lost Gear Recovery Program to prevent entanglements with fishing gear marine life. And in the past week, our team of fishermen has already recovered five pots. So this is all thanks to support from the city. And finally, we're really proud of a new program that we launched this year called the Monterey Bay Community Seafood Program, in which we're working with the local fishing community to purchase and process seafood and donate it to emergency food relief programs like the Monterey County Food Bank, Meals on Wheels, Allen Friends, and a number of restaurants that are participating in the state of California's Great Plates Delivered Program, which delivers three meals a day to seniors to help prevent them from being exposed to COVID. So our seafood donation program has really been important for replacing some of the lost seafood markets due to COVID while also getting local seafood to our community members most in need. And we've donated around 110,000 seafood meals so far in the last six months while contributing $75,000 to the local seafood economy. And in fact, it's led to a few long-term relationships, such as the Meals on Wheels, which is now committed to sourcing local seafood year-round, which is really exciting. So we're doing a lot and we really could not do it without our close partnership with the harbor and the city. And I just wanted to thank you so much for considering us in this budget.
Thank you, Sherry. We appreciate you calling in, as always.
Thank you.
Good evening. We are going to go next here to Marcia Moreau, who is a member of our Library Board of Trustees. Hi, Marcia.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, I'm Marcia Moreau, and I'm the Chair of the Board of Trustees for the library. But I'm not speaking for the library board tonight. I'm speaking for myself. I just want to say that we appreciate the support of the whole community for the library. And we also appreciate the support of the city manager's office and you of the city council as you deal with this difficult fiscal situation created by the pandemic. I just wanted to say that although the library budget's much lower than it was before, and what, of course, what we would like it to be, the library board understands the impact of the city's budget situation on city services. And we have a plan that we worked out collaboratively with the city manager's office to restore service to the library in light of the budget cuts. We'll still be able to open in July with the budget that's being proposed today. And we have a plan for a phased return to full service as the city's resource base is restored. We really appreciate your support as you deal with the difficult fiscal situation created by this pandemic. And we look forward to continuing collaboration as we all work towards restoring our funding and our services. And I just want to add that because we're opening and welcoming to all, we work closely with the police department and we really appreciate their timely response and their sensitivity dealing with situations that may arise in the library. And we really appreciate the addition of a social worker to your staff because that will benefit us a lot. So thank you very much.
And Marcia, Mayor Clyde here. Thank you for all that you do as an individual, even though you're not speaking for your board, but to your board as well.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Thanks, Marcia. Let's see here. Next caller is Rob O'Keefe. Hi, Rob.
Hey there. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Excellent. Well, I want to say, first of all, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Rob O'Keefe. I'm the President and CEO of the Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I just want to throw in a couple of points here that I think are very relevant to the discussion that's been had. First, stating the obvious, today is a major pivot point for our state, our county, and our city. June 15th is going to go down as a major milestone in stepping out of the uncertainty of COVID and towards a less uncertain path towards recovery, stability, and reinvigoration. But it's not just the statewide step forward taking place today. It's the step being reviewed by all of you tonight. You have the ability to drive the rate of recovery for Monterey. I think Hans did an excellent job of outlining what that looks like. You have the ability to make our path forward less uncertain. And as Hans pointed out, you at least know some of the unknowns and together we can work with that. So I'd also like to thank you all for your collaboration through COVID. It's been difficult and that's a huge understatement. Has there ever been a year when we've dealt with so many unknowns? MCCBB has never worked more closely with the city of Monterey and your staff and Hans and his team as we have in the past year, and I intend to not let up on that going forward. If nothing else, COVID has taught us that collaboration is absolutely critical. Staff recommendation to support the rapid, and I will stress responsible recovery of hospitality is critical to our path forward. And while the state's taking a step forward, we have a ways to go as a city. We see travel starting to come back, but key parts such as meetings and conferences have a long way to go. I especially look forward to our work with the Monterey Conference Center to bring this valuable travel customer back. So I just wanted to say it's your partnership, not just your investment in our number one industry that will guide and drive our rate of recovery. And I want to thank you for that partnership and recommit towards expanding on that collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, let's take another look and see if anyone else has joined us. I think we've got Rob, Marcia, and then Esther is the other hand up here. So let's hear from Esther. Okay.
Hi, everybody. Again, I do want to thank you all. It has definitely been an unprecedented year. And everybody, I think, had to work extremely hard to get the results that staff has been able to put together for a budget. I wanted to thank Hans for acknowledging that we are not completely out of this and especially this new variant that is making its way across the country. At some point, hopefully, it won't turn into what we just came out of and that the vaccines will help protect against it. But I think it's important that everybody keep in mind that we are far from in the clear on this. I also wanted to just bring up to everybody that, given the fact that we are in such an unusual situation financially, I look forward to hearing the conversations around cannabis, especially after the way we saw everybody in the city vote for the increase in sales tax and TOT for the very same reasons that I anticipate that cannabis is going to get the similar support. So just wanted to thank you all and keep up the good work.
All right. Thank you, Esther. It looks like we have no other members of the public who are here to speak on the budget tonight.
All right, thank you. Well, again, thanks, Sherry, Marcia, Rob, and Esther for their comments. Bring it back to the council. I'm ready to get people back to work and restore some services. And so to start discussion, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution for the fiscal year 2021 operating budget.
Second.
Second.
All right, discussion. We've got two seconds. Thank you. Any discussion?
No, great work. Great work by staff.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Mayor, I'm so sorry, Mayor Clyde. Just to clarify, I noticed you said fiscal year '21. It's '21, '22 for the record?
Yeah. Adopting the fiscal year 2021, 2022 operating budget of the city of Monterey. Okay, thanks. I either was speed reading or I had a gap. Yeah, Tyler, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Did you have comments, please, under the motion?
No, I have a few, so bear with me here. I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. I do want to start off by kind of...
Oh, you're frozen, so just wait a moment, please, Tyler. Hopefully you can still hear me. In and out, so. You might want to try reconnecting.
Extending.
Yeah, you're still sporadic. We'll keep trying.
It looks like it is Councilmember Williamson's connection because others can hear us and our feed without going to Zoom is fine.
Okay, do you want to text him or I can?
Well, I can text him. In fact, I can call him and then we can have him on audio here.
Yes, thank you.
To Esther.
Say, in order to open my phone, I can't use Face ID and I forget my password. The challenge is. Tell him we can see him again, though. Oh, no, he's gone. He's also muted. Here we go.
Go ahead and speak.
Is the audio coming through okay?
It's good enough.
Ed, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so I was just kind of giving appreciation to the public for bearing with us as we try to navigate this really challenging year. But then that kind of wanting to roll over that appreciation to the staff for finding a quick approach to taking on the economic issues that we were experiencing, being very creative and innovative, and taking a lot of leadership. And in addition to that, staff has... Getting... Okay. In addition to that, the staff in partnership with our union have taken the steps to also help us with the budget in regards to not taking on their already approved increases to their pay. So I just... Now that's out of the way, I'm going to speak to a couple of tough points, and then some additional thoughts. So first, I'm hoping that we can, obviously not tonight, but sometime soon, we can look at updating our commitment for the return rights for those that were laid off from two years to three years, or whatever the revamped strategy is to reopen everything up, right? So that conversation that we had a couple of months ago, when we were talking about the budget, there was an indication that we were looking at three years for the library to fully reopen. And if that's the case, then we need to make sure that we kind of keep that level of commitment to the people that we've identified as part of our Monterey family. So I'm just hoping that we can take a look at that. And I'm not sure how that action is forward, but I'm hoping that we can address that sometime soon so that we can make some kind of commitment to those that were laid off and that have sacrificed their positions for us to try to maintain some solvency here. And an additional point on that, even if some of the positions, because I understand that there might be a reorg with some of these changes. And so even if there is a reorg, the hope would be that positions that do become available, even if it's not the position that they had when they were here previously, they can have first rights to other positions that they may qualify for and that are available. So the idea here is kind of giving priority to those that we made a promise to give them first rights to their job back once they started opening back up. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out. And then one last, kind of maybe a little bit of a touchy point here. But, you know, as a council member, I haven't seen... I didn't see the proposed budget until the end of last week, when the agenda went out. And I don't think that there was a lot of time for us to have a dialogue with the public on looking at our budget. So I understand that we're going through tough times. I understand that we've lost some key staff members in the pandemic. But it doesn't, I don't think, gave us a break from doing our due diligence of getting public input. And if anything, actually, that's what makes sure that we're providing good, sound public documents and that are in agreement with what the public wants and needs. So I'm just hoping that as we move forward in the future, that we try to, you know, if we need to put more tasks off to get the budget prepared earlier so that we can give that allocated time to the public to have those discussions. And then, so I want to speak to two elements here, which is efforts to increase the revenue and then efforts to shore up expenditures. And so for the revenues piece, as was kind of brought up in the dialogue earlier, you know, I think that there's hope and opportunity in regards to the cannabis tax. And then another idea that we've talked about in the past was the idea of doing the vacancy tax. So I think we need to keep these ideas in the front of our minds, opportunities to create additional revenue. Those might be somewhat towards maybe new programs, but also kind of looking at a way of how we can also utilize those or leverage those to support efforts to help us meet our deficit. And then from the side of shoring up expenditures, some of these pieces are things that we've talked about in the past, but I'm just laying out here as this moment in time that we have to talk about the budget. Looking at consolidating staff, you know, we're coming out of the pandemic, and the work environment for many is changing. And so how we be looking at maybe revitalizing the way that we have office spaces? And can we utilize some of those office spaces to lease out to, you know, to different customers and actually create some revenue from that? Or even sell some of our properties? I think there's opportunity there for us to think about different ways of utilizing our spaces. Another point is looking at the potential of reducing office hours of service for administrative offices. We have to make sure that that is well-balanced between the needs for all those in our community. But again, this is something that we've talked about in the past, so just a space for us to continue having that conversation. Developer deposit approach in administration, I think there's a conversation to be had there. More self-automation. So looking at some more automated systems, website, kind of getting up to date here. I know that there is plans to update our website, and I'm not sure if Hans can speak to that at all. But internet-based, you know, anything that we can do to make it easier for folks to be able to do the tasks themselves and take the burden off our staff so that our staff can focus on the complex things that, you know, we really need to be able to get done and have focus towards. Two last thoughts here. Larger conversation about the fire department and the eminent presentation that we'll be having around the standards of coverage study. So I'll just let that be there just as a point of conversation. And then the last thing is cost recovery analysis. So I've talked about this before, but I think there's opportunity for us to better cover the costs associated with the sports center. So when we're talking about not even being able to provide the services that we have here, and yet a huge portion of our budget is going to cover these costs, is this a priority for us? Absolutely. But, you know, when we're struggling to, you know, make sure that we're covering the salaries of our employees to provide basic services, I think we need to make sure that we're taking a look at these things. So doing some analysis on that, I think, would be helpful and useful. Also, other ways that we could look at these types of things are grant and funding opportunities. There was the idea of increasing rates or a facility fee associated with that. And then, you know, similar to how we have, like, Friends of Monterey Library, maybe having something similar to the Friends of the Sports Center. Some, you know, some private support on public efforts here, I think, could really help us meet the need. So I appreciate everybody bearing with me as I go through this litany of things, but I think it's important to have this conversation, because when we're looking at the deficit that we're seeing over the next few years and then realizing that there's a lot more that we can and should be doing, I just was trying to pave a path of being hopeful and optimistic about our future and knowing that there's opportunities ahead of us. So, you know, I'm willing to support the budget today, but I'm hoping that, again, we give ourselves some more time to review this and have that conversation with the public. Because it just kind of seems a little bit rushed from my perspective. And I know that we'll be continuing to have the conversations moving forward. So thanks for the time.
All right. Thanks for sharing your thoughts with us, and we will be having a lot of conversations in the future. So can you hear us all right? And you're just... You can hear us okay, Tyler? Thumbs up?
I can hear you.
We can hear you now, all of a sudden. Okay.
Yeah, I hung up with Nat. I'm thinking everything is good here, but...
Yeah, you're... No, good. Thank you.
Yes.
Dan, any comments before we go? All right. Thank you, council, for your really very sterling comments. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, it passes four and zero. Looking at our agenda, we've got a presentation, council comments, any manager reports. We want to go to closed session. So we've been sitting for two very intense hours. Let's take a Monterey Five and come back.
At nine ten.
At nine ten, please. Take a little break.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This presentation will be started by our Public Works Director, Steve Whitby, and then our City Traffic Engineer, Andrea Rennie, will bring it home. Thank you.
Thank you, Hans, for that. And what I'm going to do is ask Matt to go ahead and start the presentation, the slide deck that we have prepared. If you can hear me, we're not good to go?
Yep, we can hear you, and I'm pulling up the presentation right now.
Perfect. So the first thing for you, we had a very eventful in terms of stress level of meeting earlier today. This is a little bit less stressful, hopefully. We don't really ask for any decisions on this aspect today. Some input would be great, and it's more informational for council as part of our processes. We're developing this project, will involve coordination with other local governments and entities. And we wanted to make sure that the city council had first whacked at it, if you will, in terms of what the design looks like, and to be able to answer questions from our neighboring constituents as they may come forward. So essentially, what we're going to be talking about is the Marina Lot improvements down by the waterfront. Next slide now. So as you all are aware, the parking at the Marina area is pretty congested, and it's one of our main access points to-
Sorry, real quick, sorry to interrupt. Is the council chamber with the slide supposed to be the one that's spotlighted? Because I'm seeing Steve spotlighted, which I don't mind seeing you nice and big, Steve.
If you choose your gallery view, you can pick that slide, Tyler. If you hit the gallery view and you choose that icon that shows the council chambers, or what was the council chambers, it should get you to the-
I was just referring to the public. I'm not sure how it comes up on there.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Williamson, for bringing that up. AMP now has its spotlighted on this. We're getting used to this new, very complex system. So, thank you.
Thanks, team. Perfect. It's always good to make sure the public's done what we're talking about. So what we have here is an aerial view of the parking by the waterfront. Worf 1 is on our left, Worf 2 is in the middle, and what you can see is the waterfront lot, which we completed recently, and we all were out there for the ribbon cutting. The phase we're talking about today is the Marina Lot, which sits between the harbor boat launch and Worf 2, and a future phase that'll come down the line in the future CIP, probably in the 2023 era, will be improvements to the dirt lot, as shown as a future phase here. That's not part of this project. It is something that we're contemplating as we move forward for development of parking along the waterfront. Next slide. So as we talked about just now, you know, that was an overview of why we're here. The infrastructure is to improve the Marina Lot. The primary funding mode for this is Marina funds. The Marina boundary extends well into the Marina parking lot. There will be no general funds involved with this parking lot improvement. It'll be a combination of Marina funds and parking funds. And basically, the following phase in the dirt lot area by the dry boat storage will be something that happens in the future, hopefully, if funding continues or we work that direction. Next slide. So why are we doing project over there? Essentially, the pavement is in need of extensive repair. One thing to remember, not only parking vehicles, people need to walk to those parking stalls. We need a safe path to access the vehicles, inviting location for our tourists to come in. As we all understand, TOT and tourism is vital to our economy. We want to make it a pleasant experience. Additionally, environmental upgrades, as we saw with the improvements to the waterfront lot, we want to make sure we're protecting that oil grease debris that comes out of vehicles from getting into the bay. Right now, there's a direct transmission of those fluids and materials. When stormwater goes on the lot and it goes out into the bay, improvements are needed to make sure that we're taking care of the environment. And there's operational improvements and safety improvements. Operations with our new parking software will make one experience for the parking customers, and safety improvements to make sure that the routing and circulation within the lots for pedestrians and vehicles is as conflict-free as possible. And finally, the improvements that we're doing here are consistent with our adopted waterfront master plan. Next slide. And here's just a close-up of the existing configuration of the Marina Lot. It's been this way for many decades. It's served its purpose well, but it is time to have some extensive remodels. For those of you who have been out there, there are certain areas of that which are simply just atrocious and need some assistance. Next slide. So this is our layout that we're looking at. As you can see, we flipped the parking stalls basically 90 degrees to be consistent with the waterfront lot. What we've identified here are paths of travel. The green areas, it's kind of hard to see on the slide here, but they're orange boundaries and have green dots within the middle. Those areas are identified to be landscaped areas. One of the things that we've heard comments regarding our other lot was there was not enough green space, not enough trees, not enough shade. In this new configuration, we've made a concerted effort to increase the green space out there. It also helps with our environmental footprint. It also helps with stormwater treatment, frankly. And it's a way that we can continue the efforts of Monterey, making improvements to the environment. Next slide. This is kind of a confusing slide, but one of the things that really is a difficult aspect out there with our existing lot is the traffic patterns and how the traffic flows. What we've done, as we've done, is some extensive work with turning movements for trailers. As you know, this lot is where people come to launch their boats. And they want to make sure they have a safe access to the launch and can put their boats in the water and then go back and retrieve them at a later point in time. So we did some extensive work with the routing to make sure that it was going to be compliant. We're closely with John Haynes, Harbor Master, to make sure they were all on board with the process and to make sure it was going to be a pleasant experience and a better experience for the boating community. Next slide. So like I said, this is going to be kind of a short and sweet presentation. It's not meant to be anything that comes forward in terms of, you know, short, providing any summaries to the council members. But we want to keep it brief for you all so that you can get a sense of what's going on. You'll see the rectangle portion that's outlined there. And really, this is what's driving one of the main components. One of the main components of the design is actually shifting a portion of the recreational trail. What we want to do is alleviate a conflict point that we currently have when they exit on Figaroa Street with the recreation trail. And in order to do that, we want to shift the recreational trail towards the water or up on the screen about 50 feet. Shifting that recreation trail about 50 feet based upon deed restrictions requires us to go to Pacific Row and the Monterey County Parks District for additional approval to make sure that they're in agreement and understand the reason why we're shifting the trail over. Essentially, what it has to do is it alleviates a traffic concern, and that's where I'm going to turn the presentation over to Andrea to better explain what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish by addressing that area in that rectangle, which will help us exit, have traffic exit the Marina parking lot and improve the exit of Figaroa and Del Monte. So with that, any questions on the first part? Otherwise, we'll go to Andrea for the second part of the presentation.
Do we have council questions? Councilmember Dan would have question for you, Steve?
Sure. Thank you, Steve, for the presentation. Just curious, what is in the Marina fund? How much do we have money in it?
Off the cuff, we just adopted the budget, and we're looking at, we're looking at those numbers being finalized from the action you just took, but it's roughly in the area of $2 to $3 million of the funding available for capital improvements.
What's the projected budget for this project?
I think our latest estimate is about one and a half.
Okay, and the last question is, will this increase the parking slots for Marina parking?
So right now, in that lot, there are roughly 70 stalls, which consist of, let me check my notes here real quick. There's about 270 stalls, seven of those are ADA stalls, and we have 29 trailer locations. The new alignment, we lose a few stalls. We're down about 260, similar number of ADA and a similar number of trailers. We lost about two trailer, two or three trailer stalls as well. But we're losing that for the efficiencies of turning moments, so we can actually have the lot be safer and more usable.
So some better access then?
Better access, better circulation, better safety for pedestrians. It is very close to the same amount of stalls. It's slightly fewer, though.
Okay, great. Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Any other council questions? Okay, don't see any. I have one. Steve, when you were talking about the entrance to Worf 2 and towards the kayak building, the dry boat storage?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I think I've been working on that one for 20 years. I made more whenever we bought the Cattellis SP property. Probably more than 20 years. That's frankly an eyesore. I don't know if it's in the Marina district, if we can use special funds on that. But I would understand if we could, that we maybe combine that sooner than later.
Yeah, the desire on that one is to use parking funds. It's not in the Marina zone. Our slight hiccup from COVID interrupted our flow of parking revenue. That is, I'm going to say next on our list, but we need to make sure that the parking revenue can support that improvement. It is an eyesore. We have a conceptual idea there, what we want to do. We just, we spent a lot of our parking dollars that we have in reserve. There's still some there, of course, but we need to essentially build that resource back up over the next summer year, hopefully, and we'll be back in a future CIP to identify that future phase.
Good, great answer. All right, so we'll go to Andrea now.
Okay, thank you. So I like to focus a little bit on the aspect that Steve talked about, and that is the relocation of the recreational trail to the north. And I like to talk about a little bit of the concerns that we have with the area that's highlighted in orange. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this is a snapshot, and during a weekend, we have a lot of users of the rectrail. We also have a lot of users who park in a waterfront lot and exit through Figaroa, also the Marina Lot, and exit through Figaroa and the commercial Worf. So we do have a lot going on in a very limited amount of space. We have done some improvements in the intersection. We've installed protected lifts for that left turn movement. We have an adaptive system at the intersection that does look at the queue. But the issue is that the competing queues from Figaroa also compete with the traffic on Del Monte. So we have to be wise in allocating that green time. We've also installed signs to try and persuade drivers to go straight and use Franklin to El Estero to reach Highway 1. But as you can see, that left turn is the preferred movement, and it's the high-volume movement for that amount of space that we have. Next slide, please. One of the situations that we encounter there is what we call a multi-lane threat. So basically, car A sees a pedestrian or a bicyclist, and they stop. Car B does not see the pedestrian or the bicyclist because car A is obstructing it. So by the time car B does see them, they have a very short amount of reaction time and space to stop. So we have heard over the years a few complaints of near misses at that location. Next slide, please. So here's just highlighting the multi-lane threat with the cars that are traveling southbound, the red stripes, and the cars traveling northbound, and then the users of the rectrail. Another thing that we do see is the drivers tend to focus on a green arrow, and they tend to get frustrated as they see the green arrow turn into red. They become a little bit more aggressive with their frustration, so they take a little bit more of the space. They block the recreation trail. It frustrates the users of the rectrail. And also, they tend to be a little bit more aggressive in that they yield less, and they also take more of the space. So next slide, please. So the proposed recreational trail realignment, it puts the recreational trail above the exit lanes. So basically, what we're doing is, instead of having everything happen in this one limited space, we break it into three crossings that are safer, and we will install raised crossings that delineates the area for pedestrians and bicyclists and slows cars down. So if you look from left to right, that first crossing of the rectrail, you only are looking for cars coming in one direction, and it's an always stop. As you continue the crossing in the middle, that is one lane and it's stop condition. And then you continue, and you cross again. You're not crossing all of the exiting vehicles, and where everybody is just competing for that same space. Next slide, please. So what we're trying to accomplish is better visibility for all users, users of the rectrail, especially in drivers. When you have better visibility, you also have better safety. We eliminate the multi-lane threat. We don't have the exit traffic blocking the rectrail, which frustrates the users of the rectrail. And we eliminate that driver frustration that can result in unsafe behavior because they're frustrated because they have to yield to rectrail users in order to make the green light. Next slide, please. So this is just a snapshot of what it would be after with the proposed realignment and what it is currently. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good, thank you. And questions? Councilmember Ed, Councilmember Tyler, questions? I think we're all good.
I have a question. Was there any other alternative ideas looked at regarding the proposed-
We lost you there, Councilmember Williamson. Can you repeat your-
First you guys did. I was just wondering if there was any other alternatives looked at regards to the realignment of the rectrail.
This was meant to enhance safety, so we did look at a few things, and Steve, you can chime in. But we did have a lot of things going on with the boat ramps and the trailers and all the different movements. So we did try to separate everything and try to keep a safe space for everybody while still maintaining that circulation. So that was part of that first look, where you saw all the green lines and all the trailer movements.
And just to echo that a little bit, just so you're aware of the effort that we put into this design, because we know that circulation, and this is one of our prime locations for customers. We actually hired a consultant to help us with the movements and the transfer. We had Kimberly Horn come in and do a few scenarios. I think they put seven on the table that we had looked at from Krista Steffi, John Haynes, myself, traffic, making sure we're choosing the best option that would be presented. So there were several options, several alignments we looked at. Frankly, some increased parking, some decreased parking more. This is kind of a best of circulation and still maintaining our inventory to- This is kind of a best of circulation and still maintaining our inventory to, you know, provide parking for the for the destination users. So to answer your question, there were several different iterations that we looked at to come up with this, you know, fairly close to final design.
I would just throw out interest in potentially maybe looking at some alternatives. I hear what you're saying in regards to the idea of maybe losing some parking spots, but I'd rather focus on the safety of folks on the red trail at the expense of losing a few parking spots. And it would just be interesting to see some some alternatives. So that might be something that we could look at in the future.
Certainly, I can probably can prepare that for you offline. We have, like I said, seven, right? I think that one of the things to remember is all of us, particularly staff, as many different masters we're trying to serve, obviously, the city council is our prime master that we want to go to to achieve product. However, in this particular case, we're also dealing with the Coastal Commission. And Coastal Commission is very concerned about us losing any parking stalls and they want to increase parking stalls so more people can enjoy the waterfront area. So we have a couple of different masters to serve here. And like I say, we're trying to come up with the best solution that combines safety and circulation, safety, pedestrian, safety within the lot as well as on the recreation trail. So like I said, I'm happy to have to in the future, you know, identify different alternatives that were looked at or you're obviously welcome. We can shoot a couple of copies over to your to your office if you'd like to to see some of those as well.
Okay, no, I respect the fact that you're you're trying to balance a lot. So I appreciate the thoroughness of what you all have presented to us today. Thank you.
I've got one comment.
Yes, the council member in.
Yeah, for Andrea and Steve, I'm sure you've you've looked at all the contingencies. The best option would be to, you know, push the push the water a little bit further away from Del Monte and I think we'd all be happy, right? So we realize your space you're dealing with is very limited and it has been a problem intersection for many years. And I know that ultimately, Wharf two services the commercial industry. So there are times when when the squid hit and the trucks are waiting. So I'm sure that John Hayes has contributed in that. In terms of any design changes, does not preclude the very vital commercial industry of fishing, where some of the trucks have to back down. I know it's, you know, a nightmare at some times. But it's planned chaos, but it's essential to be able to get the trucks down to the end of the wharf. So I just wanted to highlight that. I'm sure that as the future design gets a little bit more specific, you'll be considering many, many of those factors. But I just wanted to point out that it is servicing a very vibrant commercial industry for fishing and trucks have to get down to the end. And a lot of that happens at times in mornings when before people are even awake and they're not even aware of it. It may happen at three o'clock in the morning and there's 25 semi trucks that are taking their turns and backing down. Obviously, the pedestrians aren't there, but I'd hate to see any, you know, curbs or physical impediments for the ease of backing up the trucks.
No, that's a great point. And actually, we have the commercial vehicles as well as the dry boat storage crossing the dry boat storage and getting from dry boat storage to the launch ramp, you know, uses this intersection as well. To be very honest with you, the third phase where we look at that dirt lot and how we can reconfigure that dirt lot to accommodate those trucks, short of putting a turnaround on the wharf itself, which is another project we're trying to work with, will actually better accommodate that. So that's why we're looking forward to that third phase coming in, which will provide that staging area and then an area for those trucks. This helps that process dramatically, but the final piece of that puzzle is the third phase. Or, you know, it's kind of a hope to try to have a mid wharf turnaround. But that's that's very challenging to get permits for.
Yeah, I understand that. And it's, you know, it's one more thing to think about as you design. But you're right, it's, you know, it's it's a long process, but phase three will be the final touch. It will really, really improve the whole area. I remember what used to be there and there was a gas station there and there was a taxi stand there and that entire row and section abutting Del Monte was industrial. And so it is morphed into something, it may not look like it, but for those who have been around a while, it is a greatly improved area from what we used to have. But now everybody wants to get there at the same time, so we have to have to change it. But it's much more improved over what it was 25 years ago.
Good point. Do we have any public comment?
Do not have any public, oh, one, as I was speaking, someone did raise their hand here. Eloise Shim. Eloise, if you could please unmute yourself, thank you.
Okay, good evening, City Council, this is Eloise Shim. So this is a little bit off the parking garage, but I did have an experience last Friday while I was walking by the parking garage on Tyler. There were three to four police brandishing their automatic rifles and heading towards the garage there. And I turned around and walked away from from that. But I read in the Monterey Police Department Twitter feed that somebody was brandishing a pellet gun. That's why they were going towards the parking garage. And after they detained him and booked him, they released him from the the local precinct here. And I just want to say that, you know, I'm not really a proponent of stopping and frisking people, but in the report, it said that there were complaints the day before about him. And, you know, I think that with all of the shootings that have been going on in California and elsewhere in the country, they shouldn't just let him go and say, well, it was an imitation firearm. Because a pellet gun, you can put explosive pellets in the pellet gun. And yeah, I just think that they were a little bit not really responding seriously with that. So so that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. This is Mayor Clyde. I would point out to you that this is state law. It's not up to the Monterey police to decide if someone gets booked, if they have bail, et cetera. The state laws have reduced a lot of felonies to misdemeanors. And so please don't think it's our police who aren't performing well. We are a role model of community policing, but thank you for calling in. Do we have any other comments on the red trail?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks so much. Great report. Have full confidence in our experts on our staff to come up with the best solution. Council comments?
I have one.
Okay, let's start with the, we'll start with the man in the room. Councilmember Dan.
Thank you very much. So two reports on the Monterey regional waste management district and the MST boards that I sit on. First is the announcement of our general manager, Tim Flanagan, is retiring after 16 years with the district. Then we've already started our our search, or at least we're going to start our search. And then the MST board has approved the Surf Busway Bus Rapid Transit Project. We approved the study of the mitigated negative declaration and then we approved the project. So we're looking forward for that to start. And that that project is a bus lane that runs parallel to Highway one and it'll be really good for for traffic. It was exciting. Yeah, yes, that's it.
Thanks for serving on that board. Bye. Tyler, or Tyler, do you have council comments tonight?
Nothing, I'll pass for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyler, Councilmember Ed.
The only thing that I'll make note of since it's almost one o'clock here is is the recognition of June 14th, which was National Flag Day. And just wanted to recognize that, I hope everybody flew their flags and we recognize the importance of recognition of these important holidays. And that particular holiday was actually first recognized, I think, in 1777. So it's an important national holiday. So congratulations to our flag as it stood for so many years and a healthy country as we are getting back. So just wanted to point that out. Also, my son's birthday was Monday. But Flag Day is very important in our family with the military connections and my son's birthday.
Good, thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Just quickly, the, I think I've already shared with you that the water Monterey Peninsula Water Management District is looking at its budget. We had a study session, more budgets, not as complicated as ours and not as volatile because obviously people need water. But one of the questions asked by one of the directors was some of the projects that the Water Management District does. And I thought, this is probably pretty important for us to know because they're not just into the business to going out and counting how many water fixtures that you have or coming out when you want to sell your house to make sure everything's good. So just very quickly, some of the projects that the district works on is the Los Padres Dam Long Term Plan. That's D A M. And that's going to be very interesting to see what is going to be done with the Los Padres Dam. Then aquas for storage and recovery. And that is taking extra water from the Carmel River, can be as much as 2,000 acre feet. This year was extremely low, obviously. The district actually purchases water from Pure Water Monterey and then sells it to Calam. And also has a deep well and is part of the proposed expansion project, working on the Measure J Monterey Water System Acquisition, Sleepy Hollow Steelhead Rearing Facility, other environmental mitigations, monitoring wells throughout the district and all the water conservation efforts that you see. So it's an agency that is involved in projects is one of the things was what is the budget for? And the source of income is a user fee, which is on your Calam bill. There's a water supply charge. And that also is a user fee. And finally, when the Water Management District was started in 1977, part of the voter approval was a district's tax rate, a share of 1% of the county's, at the time, the county levies. So that's $2.2 million of revenue. So it's on your property tax bill and probably like me, you've never actually looked at it, but it's there. And then after our meeting, I'll just update you completely on the budget. City manager report? Do you have anything left after that wonderful presentation on the budget?
Yes, if you like.
Yes, I would. Little shorter, though.
Yes, I'll make it brief.
That's okay.
The Materials Recovery Facility or the new compactor room for Wolf Number One
Yes.
is beautiful. We are expecting to get the three compacters delivered any day now and we will have very, very soon a ribbon cutting ceremony there. So we are ready to to roll. And we have a concept established and how to maintain it and also how to service it. So that's that. And last item, Juneteenth is has passed tonight in the Senate that will commemorate the emancipation from slavery on June, I think, 19th?
To 19th.
To 19th, 1865.
Yes.
And so that's a that's a new national holiday. And I believe also locally, there will be some celebrations going on.
Yes.
Good, that's good to know, thank you. All right, with that, we'll adjourn, thank you.
Public comments for closed session.
Oh, thank you. Yes, we have two closed session items. Do we have anyone in the public who wanted to comment on our closed session?
Yes, let's see, I don't believe we do. There were some folks who had expressed an interest in speaking in under public comment, but I do not see them here tonight for the record, so.
All right. In that case, we want to say, I think our hybrid meeting worked out pretty well. It was the first time, there were, there was a bug or two, but can you remember when we first started Zoom? And how far Zoom's come in 15 months? So this hybrid model may have some lasting effect or we may go totally personal in person again. We'll see how it goes, but I thought for our first try, it went quite well. So I'll thank our council and our staff and the public for making this another really enjoyable and challenging meeting. Thank you, we'll adjourn to close.